Okay, we're going to bring this meeting to order. For Longdale City Council. Madam City Clerk.
Good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas. Councilmember Suarez.
Present.
Councilmember Talavera.
Present.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present except for Councilmember Cuevas.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial portion. Flag salute will be led by Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez, followed by Pastor Dwight Dudley.
Please stand. The gentlemen in the room, please review their hats. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
It's always a pleasure to be here, and I feel like I'm home with family. Truly. It's always a joy to be here. And I love this city. And I just wanted to share a scripture with you all, and especially thinking about the crazy things that are going on around us today. I gotta tell you, there's so much happening. And people are being harmed and hurt and craziness that's going on. But you know what? God is good, right?
Yes.
And this is what he says, "Can two walk together unless they are agreed." And that's what this council does. You bring people to agreement. You help each other, you listen to each other, you minister to each other. And that's what you do, and I love that, you know? And you all may have different opinions and thoughts and things going on, but you come to the place where you are in agreement for the betterment of this city, the city of Longdale. And you guys are doing a terrific job. I love you. Father, I just thank you for the work that you're doing here in this particular city, Lord. And I thank you for these council members, especially our Mayor Protem and our mayor. Father, the work that they're doing and investing into your community, your people. And I just pray, Father, that you continually bless them with that ability to come together and make a single decision for the betterment of the people and the citizens of this city. Father, you have called them, they have answered that call, and they are blessing your children. So, Father, I pray that you give them that special joy in their heart that only comes as they fulfill your desire and your plan for this community and the people that live here. Father, I thank you again for the fire departments, the sheriff's department, all those who are out there in this community, keeping it safe and helping those that need help. Father, what a great joy it is to be here tonight. And just love on these guys who are here, this council, our mayors. So, Father, thank you for this opportunity. Bless this house. Be with those that have something to bring forward and talk about. And, Lord, let them speak clearly and let them have a heart that's just tender and know that this council is trying to meet their needs. So, Father, let them speak clearly and let their hearts speak what it is that's necessary. And I just thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our Captain Nicole Palomino, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for August 5th through August 18th. And regarding our notable arrests and investigations, on August 6th at approximately 10:00 PM, Deputy Damien Rodriguez was patrolling Rosecrans Avenue and Inglewood Avenue when he checked the license plate of a U-Haul truck that was traveling in front of him. The license plate returned indicated the U-Haul truck was reported stolen. Deputy Rodriguez and assisting Longdale units conducted a felony traffic stop of the truck and safely detained one male adult driver and two male adult passengers. The driver was arrested for driving a vehicle without the owner's consent, and he was not a resident of Longdale. And then on August 11th at approximately 7:30 AM, South Los Angeles Station deputies responded to a traffic collision call for service at the intersection of Gravilla Avenue and Marine Avenue in the city of Longdale. The deputies arrived on scene and discovered that a male adult and sole occupant of one of the vehicles was deceased. The second vehicle was occupied by a male adult driver and two female adult passengers. All three sustained injuries and were transported to the hospital for medical treatment. The driver was determined to be under the influence of alcohol and was subsequently arrested. The case was presented to the district attorney's office, and the driver was charged with gross vehicular manslaughter while intoxicated and felony driving while intoxicated. And he was not a resident of Longdale. And then regarding our traffic-related incidents, Motorcycle Traffic Enforcement Deputy Morales issued 37 citations during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations, such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. And then lastly, our next Neighborhood Watch meeting will take place sometime in September, but the date has not been determined yet. And this concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay, are there any questions of the sheriff's report?
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, let's move on. Okay, we're on oral communications. This is where you have opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you come line up by the flag when it becomes your turn. If you approach the podium, take about three minutes. At two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on this screen, that screen. That'll give you a signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called, you simply approach the podium when the person before you has concluded. That's our first speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Holly Osborne. I live one block away from Longdale and Redonda Beach. Now, last time I was holding up some charts and maps, and they were all orange where Longdale was, meaning Longdale really needed trees, okay? If any of you read the paper yesterday or the day before, they talked about a new huge heat wave that's going to come this week. And I thought, this is the perfect time to take data. When you're walking, and what's the difference in temperature when you're under a tree and when you're not? Now, it doesn't have to be on the row, because technically we can't even touch a foot on a row. But any street in Longdale that has trees or doesn't have trees, walk down it, take a temperature. And all these young kids with their techno toys probably have a phone that will do that. Our environmental charter or Longdale High, I understand, has an environmental program. We need you to get involved, and there're not going to be any trees when you grow up, because Metro wants to take them all down so that they can put up a cement path. And so, again, take a walk. And your Y-axis will be the temperature. The X-axis will be how far you've walked. Maybe if you started a certain street, then one block away, the temperature is this. And note where the trees are. And it's easier to take data if you go with somebody so that one of you can operate the cellphone or whatever device you're using, and the other one can take notes. Because we really need students to participate in this. I hope there's some teachers listening, but don't step on the row. You can lean over to get your temperature. Or if you've got a high-tech device, which I do not have, give it to me and I'll take that data. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Dr. Osborne. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Coulter. I'm the Interim Community Library Manager for Longdale Library. Just a couple of updates for upcoming events. We still have the vaccine clinic for back-to-school coming up this month on the 27th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM for ages 18 and under. It is for those without insurance currently or those who are on Medi-Cal. We have an increased number of programs for all ages coming up next month because we are now fully staffed. We have a new teen adult librarian at our location, so he's going to be taking over some additional teen and adult programming. And coming up later this month on the 24th, we have a limited-edition library card coming out in conjunction with Grammy artist Laufey. She's doing a book club with the LA County Library, so we have a new library card design coming out. So, that's going to be out for a limited amount of time. And in October, we have the Next Chapter Writer Summit event coming up at West Hollywood Library that everybody is welcome to attend. It's a day-long festival of books and storytelling celebrating LGBTQIA+ and BIPOC voices. So, everybody is welcome to attend that. And lastly, we have basic tech training. There are two-part programs. They're four hours each. If attendees go to both four-hour programs for a total of eight hours, they're entered to win a laptop. We still have two sessions coming up on the 19th and 20th of this month. And then again on the 19th, no, the 19th and 20th of next month, excuse me. So, we still have two more sessions coming up for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dina, Longdale resident. Just a quick question, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of my neighbor who couldn't be here tonight. He received a citation for illegal fireworks, which he now has a court date at the end of September and had to put up $2,500 out of pocket. What we wanted to know was, does he get back that with the interest if he does win the case? Or you guys are, not you, but who's ever making the interest on this $2,500? So, we're just kind of curious how putting up the money first and then who gets the interest on all this? If he wins his case, does he get back less some? That's it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening to the City Council. First of all, I would like to thank the City Council for issuing the city statement and showing solidarity with the people that has been affected by ICE. Thank you to the mayor, who promised that he would issue the city statement. Thank you again to all the City Council members. I'm here to announce that as we see the exciting youth participation in our City Council, we're forming a nonprofit organization which would be youth-led. We would be really happy to work with the City Council and any organization in the city for volunteer work and any work which would contribute to the betterment of our community. We would be really helpful for student participation, any partnership with the City Council. And our job is to empower youth and elevate them in our political scenarios, educate them about our political issues, our legislative processes, and how our city works. This is an initiative we took. We have currently two chapters, one at Longdale High School and one at Losinger High School, which are both a part of the city of Longdale. So, we have this initiative because as I see that there's not a lot of involvement of youth in our current politics, and which is devastating that the youth is set aside from so many decisions, so many important decision-makings that involves them. So, we have to step up, and if the city can recognize us or the city can partner with us in any issues that they want us to be heard on, whether it is a volunteer work or it's a survey, we would be really glad that we would help the city of Longdale or any cities in our neighboring surroundings. We're currently working with Assemblymember Tina McKinnear on these issues and some other nonprofit organizations at South Bay Forward for our public transit system and housing system. And we would be really happy to work with the city of Longdale on any issues if they need us for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi there. Andrew Blackney, resident of Longdale. I have one comment. It's a bit old. I had to take a hiatus. My daughter was born, so I was taking care of her for a little bit. I finally found some time to be able to come back to these meetings. And I had a comment on a previous thing that I noticed. I was wondering if it'd be possible for the city to make available how exactly public comment is supposed to work on item issues? I've noticed there's been some inconsistencies in that the council jumps straight into discussion of things without looking for public comment first. I know it's probably a minor issue because typically there's no public comment wanted on anything. But on some things, there are people that find that you guys jump straight into discussion, and they have difficulty trying to get up saying, hey, I want to have my voice heard, especially once you guys have already started discussing these things. So, I was wondering if there's an official policy for, do we talk? Do you have, like, at the beginning, supposed to say, okay, we'd like to have public comment on this? Is there any public comment? Especially because on one of the issues recently, well, not recently, but a while, a couple of meetings ago, they were starting to have a vote on an issue before public comment was even opened, and they had already made a motion to vote on it. And it was kind of this like, can we even have public comment now? Which is the issue that I was talking about. And then another issue I want to bring up is, I don't know if it's worthwhile, but to have some sort of public representation on the traffic committee. I noticed that it's one of the bodies that meets regularly that has no public entity on it, whether that be a council member that's assigned to be on that committee or whether that's a member that applies that gets onto that committee. And traffic is a very public thing. So, I would appreciate if that would be considered to put a person that represents the public on the traffic committee. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First, I wanted to thank our newest councilman, Frank Talavera, for coming out and visiting us on the row. We have given out thousands of flyers and spoken to residents and actually gone off the row and talked to people in the neighborhood. And a lot of people frankly don't know what's going on. And that doesn't surprise us, but we're very frustrated because we have reached out on many occasions to Metro and to folks who are supposed to be representing us and have heard nothing or, you know, just wait, just wait. We still don't know when Metro is going to give their decision. We expect that it'll be sometime in September. And because they haven't spoken to us at all, we're assuming that they're just going to literally railroad us and go down the row. What I've given you is, we have actually a card version of this, but this was like a mock-up. So, it's basically, "Don't let Metro pave our green space." So, that's one of them. And the other you may have seen before, which basically just explains because there are people who literally, they thought that, okay, well, we had someone, we had Holly Mitchell come out, and we voted that we didn't want it here, so what's the problem? And they hadn't heard anything, and they figured it was all done, and it's not. So, this is the August, you've probably seen June and July. This is sort of hot off the presses. But what's important for me to say is that we want everyone who is concerned about this space with these trees and this grass in the park poor city that we have, if they're concerned about this, to come out on Sunday, September 14th at 1:00 PM at the William Green Elementary School Park. So, just to read it, Metro is planning to demolish the row to build two additional trains through the city's green space. It was shocking how many people didn't know that Metro coming through meant that they would have to demolish, move a train track over closer to homes, and then put two more tracks down. And there's lots of toxic dirt out there. We know it, which is why they wouldn't let us go out and do testing. So, we're hoping that all of our council people will come out, and we've invited everyone else we can possibly think of, all of our representatives. If you have any questions, you know, reach out. There's an email on the newsletter. And we also noted that there will be a free bus. We can't tell people when the free bus is because, of course, Metro hasn't said when the meeting is. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Anyways, I'm a resident of Longdale, Condon Avenue. And I wanted to bring up if there's a possibility to introduce permit parking, because we struggle a lot with construction workers leaving their trucks at night over the weekends. You know, they come in one car, they leave in a different one, leave them there overnight. So, yeah, if there's a possibility to introduce something between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM for the residents of Condon Avenue. The other thing I would like to suggest, this is speed bump. It's a one-way street, two-lane, and we have a lot of people coming up both ways against the one way at speed. It's right next to a school. There is a small, little drain dip for the drain under the sidewalk, but it's obviously not really doing much to slow vehicles down. So, those are my three requests or suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll close public comments, and we'll bring it up to die to our comments from the council. Let's hear from Talavera.
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm happy to see you.
I'm happy to see you all. And I hope, as always, we wish to get things resolved and do what we can for our citizens, for our residents. So, I'll talk about Caitlin. Thank you for always keeping us up to date on the things that are happening at the library. Also, Dina, thank you for bringing that, that matter up before us. That's a good question. That's a very good question. Okay? Because so many times, different entities ask for money or find us and then it's an upfront thing, but we don't ever see like, hey, you know, where's the, where's the interest that of me not using that money anymore? So, thank you. We'll definitely look into it. Daniel, I'm, I'm more than happy to help you. You know, count me in and to work with you and on the organization that you're starting. I think it's, I think it's very essential that we get our youth involved in government and leadership and, and the way we want our cities to be directed. So, I will, I definitely will want to help you, be a part of your organization. And Andrew, congratulations on your new baby. Okay? And also regarding the policy on public comments, I'm sure we, we must have one, so I'll defer that to our city manager and to the people that are in charge of that. And I want to thank Holly and Annette for such an informative day out there on Saturday and for the South Bay Justice that was out there distributing their flyers and the tenacity of Chelsea. Because the cars would drive by and they would say, they would motion like, you know, either I don't want or I already have it. But she would, she would actually like go in the middle of the street and stop and have them roll their window down. And it's like Annette was saying, by the, by the look on their face, they didn't know what, what it was about. And I think it's, it's necessary that all of us as residents of Longdale, you know, just because it's not affecting our home per se, but it's affecting our community. And as I walked down the row, I saw the section of homes that would actually be isolated or annexed because of the train and the light rail that they want to put in. You know, some of the, some of the kids use this as a park. I saw a lot of people walking their dogs. And that's not going to be available to our residents anymore. So, I'm really, I'm really happy that I went, you know, and I really want to continue to be involved and I'll count, I will be there September 14th at this meeting. And I just want you to know, everyone, all of us in Longdale need to be out here to support the movement against the row, the destruction of our community. So, if you haven't thought about it before, think about it now and, and learn about it. Because like I walked away astonished. Okay? I tried to avoid walking the row, but Annette was like insisted, no, you got to walk the row, you got to walk. So, we walked from about nineteen, about 160-something all the way to 170th and, and, but every step was an explanation. And then Dr. Osborne also showed me a few points and the things that are, the things that are going to happen, you know, once the row, if they get their way, and some people are going to lose part of their yard. A yard that maybe in other, under, under other circumstances, they were, they were leased by, by BNSF. So, it's going to be a shock to them. So, we need to get the word out. We need to do what we can and we need to canvass the area. So, anytime there's an invitation from, from the group, please try to make it, you know, try to help our neighbor, you know? Like I said, I know personally that the, the train or the light rail is not going to affect my neighbor, my, my house, where I, where I live. But that doesn't mean I don't care and that doesn't mean I'm not, I'm not concerned. I'm very concerned and more concerned now that I found, find out, found out what's going to happen to all the homes along the row. So, please, help us out and whenever Annette or Chelsea come and, and talk to us and bring us flyers, please, let's get involved. Because this is something very important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Suarez.
Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. Yes, I want to thank those who've been diligent and pushing hard back on getting answers from the Metro Board and just continuing to fight the good fight. And then I did have a few questions, specifically if staff can answer Dina's question regarding if there's interest paid on those who are successful with getting the admin citation thrown out for fireworks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. There's not interest paid back, but if they win the appeal to the administrative hearing officer, they get their full refund back.
Okay. Because I know that's come up for discussion and I do think it's quite a hefty fee, especially considering if, you know, you weren't responsible for it. I know for me, every paycheck counts, making the bills, and if you're out, that amount of money could end up costing you with other things. So, I would be interested in looking to get a report on how that works out and how many people are, how many people's citation get thrown out and then seeing how that's working in practice. With regards to the nonprofit, I want to thank you for trying to be active and I think that it's helpful to have, especially the youth, understand how government works at all levels. A lot of times, everyone's focused on, you know, the federal level and sometimes the state and not so much the local, and that's a lot of times where things are really happening. So, I appreciate and I look forward to partnering, partnering with your nonprofit organization. I also want to say congratulations, Andrew, on the baby, another Longdale resident. I did want to ask, because we do have the manual posted online with how meetings are conducted, however, I do understand the comment made that it's difficult to know when to come up. Sometimes we get in the practice of just going through the agendas and if there's a way that we can make it more apparent. I did go to a, last week to a Gardena City Council meeting and they made an announcement, the mayor, right before the meeting and kind of addressed the housekeeping items. So, maybe that might be prudent before a meeting start, just to kind of give a background. Not everybody comes to the meeting, so that might be helpful. And then with regards to the overnight parking vehicles, permit parking specifically, you do have to get signatures. However, if it comes to construction vehicles or we do have certain streets that have signs where, I don't, I don't know if it's a policy across the board, but where they cannot do overnight parking. So, I don't know if staff can look into that with regards to maybe construction vehicles or something like that. And I don't know how you differentiate for some of them if they're small time, you know?
Mayor, Council, we can look into that and get back to you on the requirements for parking oversized vehicles in construction vehicles.
Okay. And that's all I had. I want to thank everybody that came out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protiel.
I want to thank everybody that came out tonight to speak. My colleagues covered it all, but Daniel, get with Jason Mentor, because we do a youth and government day. Maybe your nonprofit could jump in there with us. So, Jason, raise your hand. There he is. Okay. So, contact him. A condon, that's it. Is it by the freeway condon or is it on the other side that wasn't fixed yet? I didn't, I get an address. I don't know.
By the school?
Billy Mitchell? Okay, Billy Mitchell. Because I know it's one way down there and I know there, I turn in a lot of trucks that's parked overnight. That's bulky. But maybe Lucho can check into that for you, like Sean said. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Robert.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out and those who brought up their comments. Just a quick remarks. Caitlin, thank you for bringing up the programs. Where are you, Caitlin? There you go. Thank you for bringing up the, the programs there at the library. We appreciate all the programs you guys do there. Dana, you got your answer?
Well, I have to tell my neighbors.
Well, I kind of knew the answer already.
I think it is true, but I don't think it's fair.
Yeah. But look at it this way, when you, when you get a, a ticket anywhere else and you post bail, which means you pay the ticket and then you go and you have a hearing, you don't get your, you get your money back, but you don't get it with interest. So, it's a, it's a practice among the state.
We're talking family to the teachers and the families.
Yeah, I get it.
Sorry, can I, can I interject? Just because we're technically per policy, we're not supposed to be engaging with the public with back and forth. And not just that one, but it's been done a couple of times, so.
You guys hear that? Because I point to you, you don't have to, you don't have to point back. You don't have to, because I make a comment, you don't have to reply. You can shake your head or you can do like this, with no back and forth. Okay. Let's see, what were? The gentleman, the gentleman who brought up the nonprofit, what's your name? There you go. There you go. There you go. You catching on? Yeah, I would like to partner with you as well, because I believe that the youth have to be involved. So, yeah, so Andrew, congratulations on the, the baby girl. Okay, the public policy for his comments, that was already addressed. Anita and Holly, thank you guys for being on the Metro on this issue. Every week you guys are on it, daily. I have a, I don't think a day passed where I don't have a conversation with either one of you three about, you know, the, the row. And I want to emphasize that you have a meeting on September 14th at, what time is that? 1:00 PM? That's on a Sunday? So, everyone after church, I want to see you at this meeting. Okay, after, after church, you know, you don't have an excuse not to go to church. Let's see. Okay, that's all I wanted to add. Okay. So, we'll close comments from council and we'll move our agenda. We are now on consent calendar. What is the item, the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar? Item F.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I had a question regarding the, it's just mainly a question, the accounts payable register. There was a, I can't remember which page it was, but it was with regards to, I think it was internet access or payments, 25 accounts that, I think it had to do with remote access or internet. I was trying to figure out what that was. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong. So, let's see, look at your.
You know, I can, I don't have it offhand, but I can look into and get back to you.
Okay. It was just, I was just curious as to what it was exactly. It looks like it's some type of internet remote access accounts for certain, probably for department heads.
I believe it's like a backup type system, but I'll get more information and get it back to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent.
Motion's been made by Kearney and second by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? Madam City Clerk.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas absent.
So, now we're going to skip down to item 12, which is the West 147th Street Traffic Calming Measures. Then after that, we'll take up item 7. So, we're on item 12 now. Let's have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. There's a slide show that we're going to do to help us a little bit. This report is about the traffic calming for 147th Street from Inglewood to Rivilia, what we are calling the west side of 147. The report was prepared by General Technology Solutions, known as GTS, and Mr. Rabat Hani from GTS is here in the event we have questions or something. Next. The clicker is not working today, otherwise I would be clicking. Little bit about the street classification, the speeds and the traffic volumes found by the report. It is classified as a collector's street that comes directly from the general plan. It's 25 miles an hour posted speed limit. The traffic volumes between Inglewood and Condon Avenue, there were 2,691 total vehicles in 24 hours. And between Kingsale Avenue and Mansell Avenue, 1,000 less vehicles because they turned some other streets. But those are high numbers, why it makes it a collector's street. The speed measurements taken at the beginning of June, regular day, school was in session. The 85 percentile speed going eastbound was 20 miles an hour. 85 percentile speed going westbound is 29 miles an hour. And combined, we have 85, the 85 percentile is 28 miles an hour, slightly above our 25 posted speed limit. 1% of the cars, which amounts to 27 cars out of the 2,600, 1% was traveling above 40 miles an hour. And there were three cars that really went above 60 out of those 2,000. Also, part of our report is the collision data. We have 11, 11 accidents in five years. Four of those accidents happened on Inglewood, improper turning or things like that, and three accidents happened with parked cars. So, in reality, it's less than, than 11 at the intersections. Next, please. An important subject of previous meetings, the stop sign compliance. The videos taken were checked at Condon Avenue, Kingsale Avenue, and Mansell Avenue. They were checked at the peak morning hour of 7:45 AM to 8:45 AM. And in the evening, in the afternoon, I'm sorry, from 2:30 PM to 3:30 PM peak hours. In the morning hours, overall, 63% of vehicles stopped and 37 did not. In the afternoon, the numbers went down. 54% of the cars stopped and 46 did not. More drivers stopped in the morning. Mansell Avenue is where most of the, more cars stopped there as well. Now, the report contains recommendations, which is what we were looking for. We, recommendations are restriping to create narrower, narrower lanes, installed curb extensions, traffic circles, speed humps, bots, dots, which is raised pavement markers, and raised intersections. I'm going to go briefly through some of them and spend more time on, on the more important ones. Okay. And next one, please. Restriping to create narrower, narrower lanes. The street, next one from there, I'm sorry. We're behind a little. The street was divided in three sections based on the width of the street. Next one, please, Yvette. Segment one from Inglewood to Condon Avenue. The top picture there shows the existing. The bottom picture shows the proposed. The top picture has a drive lane of 18 miles, I'm sorry, 18 feet wide. And it gives us the indication that speeding in that direction occurs because it's a wide lane. So, the proposed changes for that section of the street is to decrease the 18-foot drive lane into a 10-footer drive lane and include some buffer zones striped for foot on each side, and that should- And that should help with speeding. Segment two from Condon Avenue to Firmona Avenue. This section, which is, uh, that, uh, shown on the screen there, it's a narrow section already with wide lanes at, uh, from nine to 10 feet. Therefore, no changes proposed for that one. On segment three from Firmona to Rivilia, this, uh, street also has, this section has a drive lane of 16 foot wide. And both of them are 16 foot wide, and we believe that now making them narrower, they will, uh, help with speeds on that street. Therefore, uh, the proposed change is adding a buffer zone of four feet between the parked cars and the drive aisles, uh, making the, uh, travel lanes 11 footers. That's for restriping. Now, we have talked to council, next slide, please. About closing Inglewood Avenue to enter 147th Street, we looked at it, part of this report. The only advantage is the reduction of traffic volumes. But there's no other, um, improvement by closing it. There are all disadvantages, uh, longer routes for residents, library patrons, people dropping off kids on school, there's gonna be more traffic diverted to the other parallel streets. Of course, emergency vehicle response time will suffer, therefore, it's not recommended to do anything at that end of Inglewood. One interesting fact that we found on the next, uh, slide is that, uh, 147th Street at Inglewood is designed to have two lanes for the right turn, uh, because there's the, um, loops on the pavement to trigger the, the, um, the signal at that intersection. The proposal is to put a, a right turn arrow there, just at the end, to, uh, help vehicles turn the right way more carefully, I suppose. Next slide. Curb extensions, this is, uh, one of the traffic calming solutions that, uh, implemented in different places. It basically, as shown on, on that exhibit on the screen, we can paint at the corners, a, an area, and put some bollards to, uh, trim down the width of the street. It makes the crossing of the street shorter for the, um, crosswalks and pedestrians. And a permanent solution here would be to do a concrete extension of the sidewalks there. Traffic circles, we talked about traffic circle, there's three potential locations on the next slide. At Firmona Avenue, uh, Kingsdale Avenue, and Mansell Avenue. The circles, uh, dimensions are there, Firmona 20 footer, Kingsdale a 32 foot circle. And currently, on Mansell Avenue, because of the crosswalks at that location as shown on the screen, we could install only an eight-foot, uh, circle right now, which will not make a big difference. Speed hamps, we talked about speed hamps in the past. I want to make the distinction today, tonight, uh, between speed bumps and speed hamps. Speed bumps are typically found in parking lots to make the driver almost stop, go down to five miles an hour, and, uh, because it's a 10 mile an hour, uh, parking, uh, area. And a speed amp is not as high, longer, and they really mean to keep the drivers at the speed of travel, 25 miles an hour, maybe go down five miles an hour in, when driving. But the, the idea is not to make anybody stop at those locations. We are proposing five speed hamps, one per block on 147th Street, and to install them mid-block. Next slide, please, dots, but POTS, DOTS, raised pavement markers. We, this was suggested, uh, in the past by a, a resident at one of our meetings, if I remember correctly. That's why we looked into them. The main idea of, uh, of a raised pavement marker is to make the driver realize you are on the road, not paying attention. But the big disadvantage of this is the noise they make. And they are not recommended typically in residential areas where the houses are right next to the road because they make a lot of noise. We calculated 2,000, almost 3,000 cars, uh, a day means every two minutes, you're gonna have, uh, the noise entering your house at those locations. Should we include them? But we did not, uh, make a recommendation for dots here. Raised intersections, uh, next one at the, um, at the intersections, really what it does is raise the crosswalks flush with the sidewalk. It acts as a speed amp at the corners, it helps, uh, hopefully helps, uh, people obeying the stop signs a little better. And they encourage by nature slower speeds because you will be stopping, uh, at the stop signs. Next slide are the proposed temporary improvements to try to make cars stop and also go slower. The installation of temporary traffic circles at three locations, Condon, Firmona, and Mansell, however, that would be kind of small. And that map actually shows the, in gray, the five midpoint locations at the, uh, for the speed hamps. Next slide shows the temporary calming devices that we are, uh, proposing. Speed hamps, uh, it's a rubberized mat, four inches high, 14 foot wide in the direction of travel. And five of those, as I said, we're proposing. And the temporary traffic circles, that's the best picture, uh, that represents what we're planning to do here, is stripe a circle in, on the, uh, street, install about 10, uh, bollards, plastic bollards, signage, uh, making the people, uh, turn right and go in the circle and hopefully follow the circle. In preparation for a possible question, we, uh, did the analysis of turning radiuses for fire engines, which is on the, on the slide on the screen. And that's how we determine the circle diameter that will work on that street. The one shown on the screen is for, uh, Firmona and 147th Street. Accomodes a fire engine, which is one of the main concerns. The, um, striping will need to be modified for the traffic cir- circles slightly. We, we can do it as, uh, part of the temporaries is, is not a problem. Next slide shows, uh, Kingsdale location, it's also doable, for that traff, for the fire engine. When we do permanent designs, these have to be, uh, carefully looked at and, and what changes will really be incorporated for the permanent solutions. But right now, if we do a, uh, temporary, shows that we should be okay. And besides, it's only bollards, if they need to be run over by them, it can be run over. The last slide is really a small circle, uh, eight foot due to the crosswalks. If we were permanent here, we need to move the crosswalks farther and do something bigger at the intersection. The recommendation tonight is to authorize, uh, staff for the installation of temporary traffic circles and temporary speed hamps, on West 147th Street. And second, authorize the budget amendment, uh, of $63,000 to cover the cost of the projects, which means I haven't told you about the cost of this project just yet. If we move to two slides, uh, please, to the cost estimate. Cost estimate for temporary speed hamps and traffic circles. The speed hamps are in the vicinity of $8,000. It will cover striping that needs to be done, we need to put legend on the roadway saying speed hamps ahead, signage. And temporary traffic circles, they are in the vicinity of $7,600. They also include striping of the center line a little bit where we need to, all the signage, of course, and all that, that I showed you on the, on, on the exhibit. The total cost for the temporary improvements are, is $63,000. And if you go back, please, one slide. Should we move forward with temporary, we are proposing following up. How do we follow up? We believe that after a study period of 90 days to see how effective really the improvements, temporary improvements result, we will engage the traffic engineer again during that 90-day period to retake speed data and, and check on stop signs, see if people are really stopping or not, see if it's, uh, if it's an effective solution. We are also proposing a neighborhood meeting for input. We could, uh, do it here or in some other room, uh, during, uh, at the end probably of the 90-day period to, uh, to hear their comments. We will have a site on, um, on the webpage for people to comment. And of course, we are gonna let them know of a number to provide comments and also an email address, so that the residents can provide input, uh, on those improvements. That concludes my presentation. Should you have any questions, let me know. And, and also the, uh, I, as I said, I have the representative from GTS, Rabat Hani, who is here to answer any questions if we need his help. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the report, that was pretty comprehensive. Let's see if there's any questions from the, um, on the diocese before we open it up to public comment. Any, um, questions of the report? Okay, any like to, anyone like to speak on this issue? May do so at this time. Yes, yes, sir. No, no, go ahead to the mic.
So it's great that we finally got to this point, it's taken years. What he's saying could have been found on any internet site, West Los Angeles, almost every county has been doing this. I also told you guys that the city of, uh, County of Los Angeles and every single school has put speed bumps around the school. Didn't take, we could have just back, um, backpacked onto that. But we spent 20 grand, it was good information. I, I know science as well, I believe in science. I do not believe in beliefs. Beliefs are what you guys believe in. It's like mojo stuff. What he's saying is science, it's not your belief, what a speed bump will do. So what a speed bump will do, it's about the same as a human body. So I can save us $63,000, the price of one of your new trucks, and to, uh, make it permanent. I live on Mansell and 147th, I'm the one that loads up all the videos on Lyndale the Cat, 147th Street. It's like 400 and something. And the only part I disagree with you, sir, and, oh, narrowing the streets is what is common everywhere around the world, Italy, Spain, it's, it's, it, this was the thoroughfare for Longdale 100 years ago, not Hawthorne. It's the reason why it's so big and all, because they wanted to build this way. And then Hawthorne Boulevard took everybody, all the rich people to the Hollywood Riviera, and that's what that was in the 30s. But the part I disagree was the, um, the eight that, that wouldn't count, the eight-foot one. If you watch my videos, you'll see cars that would have to negate that area or do something illegal and crash into it. So, um, we could save that $63,000, make it permanent. You know, the community wants safety, and, and to think that something's gonna change in 90 days or something, let's go three months, let's go three years, what's in three years? The same thing, we're trying to negate on, uh, mass transit around Longdale. So if there's no mass transit around Longdale because we're scared of not having our car, which, cars suck. So let's have the people have the city and not the cars have the, the city. You know, so much is wasted on the streets, just cement sitting there, it's ugly. You know, narrowing the, the street, making it beautiful, you know what'd be kind of cool too? Is, um, a bike route, you know, you guys want to make the community area all cool and fancy, make some bike streets things, right now in that little, where you have the little line, bike path, I don't know. Make people walk down that way with their dogs. Anyways, let's do the right thing, and it's safety, it's all around us, Hawthorne, everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney. I have a question, I left out one, uh, number, which is probably important in my report for the permanent, uh, solutions. Can I add it now?
If you think it's important, I think it would be better to add it now so that the public can hear it before they, they offer their comments.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, stand by, yeah, yes, sir.
So, um, the number I gave you of $63,000 is for the temporary measures now. If, uh, we want to implement the permanent measures for those two, items plus striping, it's calculated around $200,000. That's the, the permanent, uh, solution number.
Okay, yeah, I think you, you missing that.
It's in the report, but I, the.
Okay, thank you, yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Ryan, Longdale resident, and I just wanted to make a quick comment in favor of traffic calming. And I've noticed that there is a lot of pedestrian foot traffic on 147th, especially, uh, right after school lets out. Pretty sure, uh, a lot. I'm pretty sure a lot of students go from the Longdale High School to the library that's just outside here. In fact, just riding here, I saw a group of them hanging out on the lawn right now. And consider that pretty soon, there's actually gonna be a whole youth center here. So I would imagine even more pedestrian foot traffic and skateboard traffic. Personally, I ride my bike along there to get to the Sprouts and to get to these meetings. So I'm in favor of the traffic calming. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrew Blackney. I think that it would be fairly obvious if all these people here that are here for this, for this today told you, we want this to be permanent, please just go ahead and make it permanent, do the permanent solution, you don't have to temporary solution. So I think it'd be easy to say, how many people here want it permanent?
Okay.
There you go. So that's easy, that's easy enough. It'll save you a lot of money to do that right now, instead of having to do a temporary solution, then do this, then do a report. It saves Lucho a lot of time, so let's do it permanent. This is really important to me because that's the school that my daughter's gonna be going to. What's the price of one of those cars that's doing well over 60 miles an hour when it hits her? What is that price? Is that $200,000? Oh, sorry, Andrew, that's a little bit too expensive, you know? That's just, just above the price that we put for a head. So let's do that today.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council members? I'm gonna say the same thing. Why do you want to spend $63,000 and you're just gonna take it down after so many months? We already know that it's gonna work. The study, the study says it all. So I'm asking, just go ahead and spend the $200,000 and do it right the first time. Why do you want to keep on kicking the can down the road? Instead, you could do it right the first time. So that's why I'm just asking you for a vote to do it permanently, not temporary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Major and council members, thank you for your time this evening. I am here on behalf of families in the city of Longdale. Not only the families, but also like Andrew said, Andrew said, who could, you know, his daughter might be going to that school, my granddaughter's going to that school right here. And I've seen a lot of people just, you know, fly right through the stop sign. I mean, no, they don't care, you know? But it can happen to anybody, you know? But with the traffic studies on the street, it's safe, maybe, I'm saying five years, in the five years, there's been 11 crashes near half the cause of injuries. And yet, the recommendations tonight is temporarily. Now, if we want something permanent, like he said, excuse me, he wants to spend, I don't know if you guys want to spend $63,000 for temporarily solutions? And like Eddie said, let's just go and get it permanent, per se. Why go back, spend 63, and then go back and spend $200,000 later on to make it permanent? First of all, I think permanent is probably the best idea and temporary, in the long run, costs more and delivers less. Temporary gets knocked down, wears out, and gets ignored, per se. Temporary sends the message that safety is not value, you know? But if you make it permanent, safety is valued, okay? So why settle for temporary when the problem is permanent? If we can get the permanent solution now, I'm all for it. And I'm sure a lot of these people here are all for the permanent solution before something drastically happens, you know? Then something happens along the way, and what's gonna happen? You guys are gonna change everything and implement everything. So why not do it now before anything, anything happens, in other words? Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and I thank you again for, for everything.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't live on 147th, although I do travel it a lot. So coming down here even today, which I noticed even last week, so somebody's taken, there's three intersections, and somebody's done donuts in each one and has marked up the whole street. I know, I don't live on the street, so don't, but I was more thinking of speed humps, but if you put up that temporary circle, you know what that, that becomes? That becomes the game of who, how can we knock this down and make them put this back up again? Now, whatever you decide, and if you do want to put permanent, is that gonna be able, did you just do fire trucks as just regular fire trucks or hook and ladder?
I'm, I'm sorry, you can address the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The council.
And also, you know, ambulances are wider, paramedic rigs are wider. The only reason why I'm asking about the hook and ladders is because hook and ladder had come down 147th when I was going east and I was going west. And it was in between Condon and Pomona, which, since there's parking, I had a, which was fine, I went up on the curb, which, over a hump, to give them more room because that's a wide, you know, fire trucks are wide. But again, I just feel people, it's gonna be interesting to change people's behavior in driving anyway. This isn't, you know, Europe and this and that, but for people now to adjust to traffic circles and, so let's see how many now accidents or what have you. But yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any else, like to speak this body on this item? Okay, let's bring it up to the dice for comments from the council.
I'll start.
Okay, Suarez, okay.
Okay, I'll start. I just want to thank everybody that came out today. And, you know, a lot of times when there's policy made, it's made through certain perspectives, but it doesn't always work because the people that have to live it are the ones that end up, you know, having to deal with it. And so I, I'm a big proponent of listening to the community and, and I want to thank Lucho, too. You know, it's, it's, you know, a lot to put together these reports and, you know, you're going through it, so I do want to thank you for that. I did want to ask, because I, I am in favor of going permanent solutions, I just want to know, too, all of the questions take into account like the technicalities of it, you know, with, you know, first responders and whatnot, that gets taken into account. Do we also have the ability to have community engagement, too, with the permanent solutions? Because I do like collaborating with the community as well.
Thank you for the question. It's, that is the reason of doing temporary before. I do understand the costs, but the engagements of, of the residents, citywide, probably, they would be interested to, to attend. The, what happens is that there may be, if we go permanent, there may be changes needed, right? It is a science, but it needs a period, the improvements need a period of checking, checking them out. And I have an example in a different city. I was there and everything got striped that I covered today, actually. There was a project, there were a lot of funds available from a grant, so it wasn't an issue, and, and we striped circle, one circle, curve extensions and some other things like that. And at the end, it just wasn't well received by the public and, and therefore, we didn't move forward with the permanent. It's a different situation here, obviously, because we want it, but we have to be careful of, of moving too fast.
Well, I guess my only, like, response would be, too, is because when I drive down other schools, I, I already do see those implemented around them. So I guess mine is kind of marrying the idea of, I think one of the residents said it, is what some other areas are already doing. And if it's already been done at those areas, I don't quite see an issue since it's near a school. But I was just kind of curious if the going permanent still does have public engagement, just so that there's outreach, so that people are aware that this is getting done and whatnot, and just making sure it's done right. But I do, and I only, I, I'm in favor because I've seen the videos, too, and some of them are pretty scary, like the, like they're, essentially, there are no stop signs, like for some people that just go through there. And then the other, maybe not a question, but a comment in terms of funds, because I know that's gonna be a question. The South Bay Cities Council of Government, they're changing their Measure M policy to where cities are automatically, every city in the South Bay is getting a percentage of them upfront for their projects. So that might be a resource of where you can tap into, because it, it does have to do with some of these. You might be able to also get funding if you are implementing bike lanes. And so I think there are resources for stuff like this. So those were just a few of the comments I wanted to make.
Thank you for that. Let's hear from Councilmember Tel Aviv.
Okay, residents of 147th, thank you for coming out. I had a few questions. And over the past few months that you've brought this concern to us, I was under the understanding the, the problem is not stopping at the stop signs. And according to the data, it's not about speed. So is it about speed or is it, is it about not stopping at the stop signs, first of all? That's what I, I would like clarified, and I don't know if, you know, if.
You know, I, I would like to invite Rabad, because he has done many of these in other places. And I think it will help us with the process that Councilmember Suarez was asking for.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Rabad Hani. I'm a principal with GTS, and I'd like to start really by thanking staff, Public Works Department for their guidance throughout this process, as well as the community members for their engagement throughout the videos, as well as basically went out on the street and we talked to some of the community members as well. So it was really a very collaborative process. To answer your question, actually, it's both. Even, even if it's basically few vehicles, two or three vehicles that are speeding, the speeds are relatively high, over 60, over 40 miles per hour in a, in a street, which is where drivers should be going at 25 miles per hour and obviously kind of rolling through the stop signs or some of them just blowing through the stop signs. I should say basically that the numbers as far as the stop signs, these are basically people who even if they rolled through the stop sign, we counted them as they didn't stop. But some of them, they just kind of blew through it, some others basically rolled through it.
Okay, thank you. Because what I'm reading here on the report, and, and I know, I don't know, I know we can entertain, but I, I need to know if the residents, after listening to this report and looking at, and looking at this, this report, are they satisfied with these traffic calming situation or solutions? And if, if, if they are like, you know, like the gentleman was saying, science versus belief. I, you, you have the science, I have the belief, okay? And I don't know if, I would say, yeah, these would be okay, but then what happens if they're not okay? And if they're temporary, and, and are you gonna come back, you know, 90 days later and say, hey, they didn't work, forget it, and do, let's do something else? So, and if we're, if, if we make them permanent and, and you still feel that they're not working, are we gonna say, what? Too bad? You guys want, that's what you wanted? So I, you know, I don't want to put, I don't want to implement something on 147th that it's not gonna work. I want to hear your voice. I want to know if, if you truly believe that this is gonna work, then I'm on your side and I, I want this, too, and I want it permanent, okay? But those questions that I have is that, you know, and from the videos that we, that we, that we received from Lionel the Cat, I see some speeding, but mostly I see people running the, running the stop signs. So, and, and speed humps, if you have a big truck with big tires, you don't stop for speed humps. You just go flying, you just go over them, okay? So if you, but a speed bump, and what I experienced a few weeks ago on the way to my doctor's appointment, there was, there was a, a speed bump at the stop sign. Because if you put the speed hump in the middle of the, of the road, halfway through the, the stretch of highway, they're gonna slow down maybe, and then they're gonna speed up and run through the stop sign anyways. Because it's, we're talking about driver behavior, people that are not, people that are not respecting the stop sign. So, you know, and after this, this, you know, detailed and wonderful report, I, I personally think that, or it's my belief, I'll use that word that the gentleman used, it's my belief that having a speed bump at the stop sign would probably be more effective than having something midway where after it's over, they pick up speed again and then go through the stop sign anyways. So, you know, these are, those are some of the questions that I had. And like I said, it's like, I want, I want our residents on 147th to be happy, to be, to know that we have your backs, that we support you. I definitely do not want us to be reactive after a death of, of one of our students going to, going to school or any resident of ours, you know? But the thing is, if we're saying that this is working and, and this is what you want and we say, well, we want it permanent, okay, then that's it.
Okay, thank you. No, no, you got something?
No, I'll, I'll wait you guys speak.
Okay.
Take my thing.
Okay. You got something else?
Are we gonna move forward and talk about, like, decision-making at this point?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just make sure no one else has.
Yeah, no comments, but I can give my opinions.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. No, I, I think that this has been going on for a while and I do get, you know, wanting to make sure it's done properly, but I do, I think we're all in agreement that something needs to be done and not just temporarily. And, you know, there's, there's plenty of good ideas here. I don't see why we can't say, let's move forward with the permanent and then still have maybe one of our first meetings be, let's have a public meeting and then invite the residents. And then, you know, you do little signs and you put which ones, you know, you want and kind of make sure that mailers go out to all of those impacted residents and, you know, because they're the ones that deal with it. And then also invite, you know, first responders and whatnot, and then kind of get a gauge of what, which of these, because there's a lot listed, would be the best. And, and then kind of go from there towards a more permanent solution because I, I just feel that, I don't know, I've seen the videos and I know if I were living over there, I, I, you know, I would want to move towards something more permanent. And I do think that these streets need to be, I, I am in favor of adding like bike lanes and whatnot and making it multiple avenues of traveling on there, because it is a pretty wide street. And you may be even looking at adding parking or something, that might help. So, but I think one of the first steps I would look for is maybe having a public meeting really quickly and getting input from the residents on kind of envisioning the streets and, and what, what they would like to see.
If I may add something regarding going permanent, the process will be to engage traffic engineer to design first. And we could have the meeting before that to get the input, pretty much what I showed there are the options, but we could have renderings prepared, see what we like best. There's one, as Mr. Councilmember Tel Aviv was saying. at the stop sign, which is, it's used in many countries exclusively. You raise the crosswalk, it becomes a stop sign. There's many things that we should have the meeting before our traffic engineer comes with the options, we pin the, the tail on the, the right place. Then with that input, we have preliminary plans, and if we give the order, we make plans permanent, because they need to be designed the right way. And then we move forward with the idea of that the, the COG has funding.
Yeah.
Annually, it's going to be about the money needed.
Yeah.
That, that would be the.
Because my only concern is if we go temporary, by the time they get installed, I don't know how long that takes. And then you do the three months, and then you analyze it, and then you go start the permanent process. And it sounds like the permanent process itself is a process. So, you know, I, I don't see, I think something does need to be done. I don't think anyone's in disagreement. We just don't know what. But I think that you could get public input. So I would be in favor of holding a public meeting right away to get input, and then maybe moving towards the permanent solution.
Well, I would be in favor of giving the, the staff the direction to do the permanent one today. And then if we do a public hearing, as long as it doesn't change substantially, so it doesn't have to come back to this body. But I think the residents have waited long enough, and if we do a, but if we do a permanent one, we save the $63,000, and we apply that to the permanent one. I meant to say, if we do a temporary one, that'd cost $63,000. But we can save that $63,000 and apply that to the permanent fix. I think that the time is now to do a permanent fix. I just have two questions for you. One, of course, was out, already kind of answered. But what about the hook, the hook and ladder truck? How does that work? Have that been a consideration for the, the traffic studies?
Yes. So basically, in the presentation that the Public Works Director showed over here, we simulated a truck going after the, going around the roundabout, or the circle, basically, to make sure that it works. And this is how we determine the diameter of the roundabout. Let me just kind of speak a bit, if you don't mind, on the temporary versus permanent installation, based on our experience in other locations. I don't think there is a right or wrong answer. It's basically kind of really different shades of gray. With each one, there is advantages and disadvantages.
Right.
The advantages of doing a temporary installation versus a permanent installation is that you get to test it, primarily as it comes to what you just said, fire trucks, larger trucks. In some cases, you do an installation, and cars are able to scoot around it, because we did basically the radius as twenty foot. In reality, it should have been twenty-two feet. Because whatever simulation that you do in terms of models and whatnot, it's still a model simula, it's still a computer model simulation. It's different than something that you put on the ground. So putting things on the ground has its value when it comes to kind of really refining or perfecting if you want the permanent solution. There is obviously the, also the time aspect in terms of doing a temporary installation versus a permanent installation. You can have it installed in a month versus basically a permanent installation. It's a process. And it's a process not just in terms of the concrete that goes into the street and the design. That's the easy part of it. That's the quick part of it. It's really kind of the aspects that come associated with it. Environmental, drainage, these are the major elements that need to be taken care of. Redoing the curb ramps, this is a big deal. This is not part of the 200,000. So the 200,000 doesn't include redoing the curb ramps, because if you put a roundabout, really, the curb ramps need to be redone on all four corners. So there are kind, again, this is kind of one side of it. The other side of it is the permanent installation, which is basically you get something permanent. As you mentioned, you save the $60,000, so on and so forth, various advantages of it. So it's, it's kind of a difficult decision, really, which one to go with. But I just wanted to kind of clarify that there are advantages for a temporary installation beyond the cost. Basically, you get to have a better, better design, better design and better solution in the long term. You've probably heard, for example, in terms of a permanent installation, excuse me, permanent installations that were done in the city of Long Beach and other locations, where you have drivers flowing, flying over them. Again, it's sometimes it's just these two feet, or three feet, or four feet. Really, they make a large difference in terms of the design aspect of it. Again, hopefully, I'm not making it more difficult for you in terms of choosing whether between permanent and temporary, but I just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. We appreciate that. Mayor Protiom, Kearney.
A question for you, Lucio. On the speed humps on the photo, are the yellow, yellow things, dots, or?
They, they are reflective tape kind of. It's tape, it's.
It doesn't make any noise, because I see down.
No.
On the block dots, residents complain about the noise. What do they want, noise or safety? That's my question there. I agree with Councilman Telavere. I think the speed, whatever we put it, should be close to the stop signs, down the middle of the street. I, I'm not in favor of narrowing the streets, because on 147th, from Condon to Inglewood, you have that hotel, not motel, townhouses to the right of it, or to the left, which way you're going. And those people out there double park and triple park. If you cut that down, you're going to have congestion up the yin yang when those people double park. I do like the speed humps, or whatever you're going to put in there. I'm still kind of wary about the traffic, traffic circles, but I do agree with Councilman Telavere. The humps, or bumps, or dots should be closer to the stop signs instead of in the middle of the block.
What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
So we're mainly discussing permanent versus temporary at this point, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we go permanent.
I'll second it.
Oh, question. Are we still going with the speed humps in the middle of the block, or closer to the stop signs? Because I watched his videos too, and most of the time, it's at the stop signs.
I think that's, they're going to do a rendering once we go.
That, that won't interfere with the, with the motion.
Okay.
They're going to massage it a little bit.
Okay.
And they can add that to it.
Right.
So the motion's being made by Suarez and.
Quick question, though. Do you need a budget adjustment for that?
We will need at least a budget adjustment to do the community outreach and to do the design phase. And then the item will be brought back to council for, to put the design out to bid with another budget adjustment, be that via grant funds that the city seeks, or, or city funds. Director, would you have a round number that we could estimate just for the design phase?
Not quite, but I tell you what I was thinking, which I was going to follow, follow up with as a suggestion. We do have $63,000 being requested now. If that gets to be part of the account for this, we can award it today. I'd need to hire a traffic engineer for the next portion. It includes them being at the council meeting, and more importantly, at the residence meeting, to, to get the input, prepare everything. It's nowhere close to $63,000, but.
To get you started.
How much do you think you need?
How, I'm sorry.
Throw a number out, an estimate out.
I, I think what he was saying, sir, was that that would be difficult, but it would certainly be under the 63s, so that if the council went with the current ask of $63,000, it would more than cover that amount, and the remainder would go into the construction budget eventually, once the design was finished.
You want to add that to your motion?
Yes.
Second it.
No, one question. If we're going to go permanent, why are we doing an outreach? Because this is what the residents want already. Why are we doing an outreach?
That's true.
Well, maybe for the other side of 147th, when it comes on the east side, maybe. But these people already know what they want on this side.
But wouldn't they be involved in the renderings?
So, so, sir, I, I think what, what the director and the traffic engineer were looking at were things like, as they render it, does the idea of a speed hump mid-block, but also speed humps at the, at the traffic circle or the non-circle intersection, is that better? Do speed humps need to be mid-block at all, or should they just be designed at the intersections? At, for example, the Manziel intersection, would it be better to redesign that intersection to make a larger traffic circle, or not have a circle at all, in light of the fact that where the crosswalks currently are only let's it be eight feet? Those kinds of inputs from the, the public would be, would help with the details, sir.
Okay, okay. Okay, there's been a mo, there's a motion on the floor. Is there any debate on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas absent.
Thank everyone for coming out.
So we're moving on to.
Do you think? Thank you.
Okay.
I got that one out of the machine. You owe me a buck. We have to. Especially if we, but especially if we have an item. But we gotta, we gotta see what we got from, let's say, what? We are all so busy. So, if not, we're not going to move it. We are so busy that we gotta, even if we move it one inch.
Okay. Let's carry on with the city council meeting, please. The mayor stepped off for a minute. Mother Nature was calling. We're moving on to item G, administration. First one is in lieu of cancellation of September 2nd, 2025 city council meeting. I don't know who's handling this. I have no clue. Let's see.
That would be me.
Oh, there you are.
Assistant city clerk. Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Yvette Palomo, Assistant City Clerk. This item is to request council's consideration to cancel the September 2nd city council meeting due to the Labor Day holiday on September 1st, 2025. At the November 4th, 2024 council meeting, the council canceled the city council meeting scheduled because of the Labor Day holiday, and they rescheduled to the next day on Tuesday. Staff recommends that the city council consider counseling, canceling the September 2nd council meeting, or make no changes to the schedule, or provide other direction to staff. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
If there's not going to be a heavy agenda, I don't know, we don't have a crystal ball, I would recommend we cancel the meeting, the first meeting in September altogether.
Okay.
Can I second it?
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
And I second that.
Seconded by, um, Telavere, originally made by Kearney.
Do we need a vote, or can we do a unanimous?
Um, let's, let's, let's take a vote on this one, so the record will show.
Did you need to ask for a discussion?
We did. Councilman Telavere seconded.
Yeah. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas absent.
Okay, item eight, review of the 2025 Wall of Distinction nominees.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Jason Minner, Community Services Director. As you stated, this is a request that the council review the 2025 Wall of Distinction nominees. There were two applications submitted for this year's program. Both applicants do have representatives in the audience if you have questions for them. On Wednesday, July 23rd, the Wall of Distinction Review Committee met and discussed both applications. They were able to ask questions of the applicants, and made their decision to recommend both be sent to the city council for your review and hopeful approval. If you do approve the two tonight, staff will begin planning a small ceremony to add them to the Wall of Distinction, which is located on the third floor of the Harold Hoffman Community Center. I'm here to answer any questions, should you have them.
Uh, any questions of the report? If not, what is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
Looking for a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation. I think one of the young men was here. But anyway, well, I think the grandson and the son here.
So, so the motion, motion's being made by Kearney and seconded by Suarez, that we accept your recommendations? Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas absent.
Nice. Number nine is Hispanic Heritage Festival discussion.
Good evening again, Jason Minner, still the Community Services Director. This is a request that the council discuss the Hispanic Heritage Festival. There was an ad hoc committee formed by the, by the city council. The ad hoc committee has met three times now, and talked about a variety of things related to the event. However, there was a bit of an impasse between should we move forward with it for the year 2025. Therefore, it's before the council, the full council to review. Staff, are you here to answer any questions if we can help?
Okay, before we deliberate, let's see if we have any public comments. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Hello, everyone. My name is Ed Lopez, better known as El Tac Sky. I'm a recently retired respiratory therapist. I'm also a member of the Longdale Rotary Club, and also the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. The only reason that became valid is because the Longdale Chamber of Commerce has gone MIA, but my roots are here in the city of Longdale as well. And most importantly, I'm here representing our organization, which is called the South Bay Social Network. We're an organization that's composed of nothing but local business, business, excuse me, local business owners, nonprofits, and also career decision-makers. Our goal is to provide the whole South Bay community with.
I'm, I'm sorry, which item are you speaking on?
On the nine.
Nine.
Yes.
The Hispanic Heritage.
Kind of want to introduce myself a little bit and see, so that you understand a little bit what we do.
Okay.
And why this Hispanic Heritage Festival was important to us.
Okay.
With the South Bay Social Network, we're focused primarily on trying to bring or provide the cities with resources, services, education, along with, you know, sponsoring youth programs and academic scholarships. And we've been pretty successful with that in, within the last three years in our nonprofit. One of the things that we noticed here in the city of Longdale is the, the lack of highlighting a lot of local businesses, and at the same time, highlighting a lot of our local talent. For that purpose, we feel that the Hispanic Heritage Festival is important to be able to have it conducted in the city, because we need to bring our businesses together with their community. And at the same time, not be too concerned about what's been happening around, you know, with ICE raids and all that. Because the important thing is that it's, the whole demographic here is not all immigrants. You know, we have a lot of people that need resources, need the services, need the education. At the same time, the local businesses need to be highlighted as well, as I mentioned, with our local talents. with our local talents. We recently conducted a back-to-school event in the city of Lenox. One of the main concerns there was the attendance, because that is a more higher demographic of immigrants in that city. But let me tell you that we had a phenomenal turnout, a lot better than we thought. Over 1,300 people showed up. We gave away over 500 backpacks and fed over 1,300 people, you know? And I understand the concern here with the low attendance in some of the events that the city of Longdale has had. But for that same reason, we are here to extend a collaboration invite to the city of Longdale with our organization where our focus is on marketing, providing a platform, and also business growth at the same time. So with that being said, we want to be able to extend this invite to the city of Longdale to collaborate on not just this event, but any other future events as well. We have a lot of influencers. We do a lot of marketing and social media and that has helped us out, along with putting boots on the ground and spreading the word. So for that, I thank you for your time, and I'll let my colleague here speak a little bit on his behalf. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sergio Caldera. I'm the VP for the South Bay Social Network. And just like the Gargoyle had mentioned, I'm just basically his right-hand man. Whatever it is that he needs to push the agenda as far as what we're trying to accomplish, I'm there in all full support, okay? I am a local business owner, a small business owner. I own my own roofing company. Just he has his business as well. And our organization is composed of just that, right? Just local business members that are striving to not only market and promote themselves, but also give back to the community, primarily our youth, right? Because I think our youth is our focus, should be our focus, and those are the leaders of the future. So I just want to piggyback off of his statement, and I think that the city of Longdale has lacked a Chamber of Commerce for quite some time from my research that I've done. And I think that some of these events need that initial push and that initial drive with community organizers like ourselves that can kind of get involved and get the community out there and, you know, cross-promote or do whatever it is that we have to do. So I would probably suggest collaborating and kind of keeping this going if we can. And that way, we can kind of just get back to the community and get everybody well in the community. Thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I don't disagree with what this organization wants to do, but we've had such limited success in generating turnout for recent city events, largely attributed to community anxiety and uncertainty following recent ICE raids in Southern California. So here we have apparently on the ad hoc committee, one council member wants it, one council member recently wants to delay the festival, not postpone it indefinitely, but delay it due to the current political environment. And this was budgeted, now I would say this city $13,000, which could be used to benefit people in the community. It will not only save cities, busy city staff from working on what would likely be a minimal attendance event. Spawning this as a Hispanic event could also be an advertisement for ICE. Hey, here's a place for you to go. They have not been going to a lot of municipalities because a lot of municipalities have been canceling these events. Will the rates taper up by October? Unlikely. The current administration is focused on California due to the political stance of our governor. This was an event scheduled not as a result of residents inquiry, but by a newly elected council member. Logically, it would make sense to postpone it now for the safety of the community. I would talk to one of my gardeners about two weeks ago, and he was over in Hawthorne, and the lady over there told him, you better go hide, ICE is around the block. This is the kind of environment we live in, and I think we have to be realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello there, mayor and council. My name is Jose Ochoa. I'm the district representative for the state senator Laura Richardson. I'm speaking myself on this. So as a Hispanic, I think this is a great idea for this event, but I would recommend to do this next year because of all the ICE situation, you're gonna get a lower turnout. And if you're looking for a good turnout, I recommend next year because that's the World Cup. If you do it around the same time, you're gonna get an amazing attendance. It's just greater advertisement for the city, too. And like, because I go to a lot of Hispanic events down in Wilmington, St. Pete, Harbor City, like, it's better to promise the people there that there's not gonna be a chance you're gonna get deported. Just wanted to add that. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So I agree with the last speaker, and as a person who will probably be involved in planning this, I would hate to have a situation where I would feel responsible because I'm putting on something and it draws this ICE element and putting our residents in danger. And I know that this is not just, you know, suspicion, because I've seen it happen at elementary schools. At elementary school, I guess they call it a promotion ceremony, graduation ceremony, they show up there where families are supposed to be celebrating their children. And we are seeing lots of things happening even at El Communal College. We have seen the lowest number of students enrolling in-person classes. I mean, just bottomed out. So I'm nervous about that. I just, I would not want to put our residents in danger.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, how you doing? I'm just here in support of this potential event. As a Longdale resident for, I don't know, about 25-plus years, I got excited at the idea of this potential event. So I know I would show up. I would, you know, it'd be easier to convince my family to show up to this kind of event. So whether that happens this year, I think, you know, all the concerns that the previous speakers have brought up are totally valid. You know, whether that happens this year or in the future, I just want it on record that I think this is a great potential event for our city. I'm not sure what the stats are on our city makeup, but I think 75%, you know, Hispanics in this area, I think it'd be a great show. So, yeah, let's have it. Whether in the future, at a better time, I'm totally for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Daniel, again. It's a great event, but the current political scenarios, people are frightened. Obviously, children are obviously, like, I see, today I was talking to one of my teammates from my school, and they said that the school attendance have gone down because of what's happening right now. So it's a great event, and, but this is not the best time to hold it. It should be delayed until next year, where it will be very beneficial, and the political tense would be a little bit lower. We're not opposing the event, but it is not just the right time to hold it because of the frightening ongoing situation and our current stance on what ICE is doing. They're just looking for opportunities to hunt on people. They're gonna come after every bit of person that they find that suspicious, and not even not suspicion, they don't have any reason, they're just going on to fulfill their targets, what they're being dedicated by their departments. One stat says they have to arrest over 3,000 people a day, so they're not even looking for that. We are providing an opportunity to them that come out after residents. So we cannot put our residents at risk. Great event, again, but not the best time to hold it, and I oppose it to be held this year, and we should do it next year. It would be really good for our residents, and it would be really safe for them. Thank you.
Hello.
My name is Fabiola Lopez. I'm a stay-at-home mother of two children, and also homeschool. I've lived here in the city of Longdale for 10 years, so I guess I'm kind of a recent transplant here. But I'm from all of LA. That's what I say. I think the money that would be spent on this event is good. It's for our children, it's for, which are, you know, obviously the future of this area. Some of the stats that some other people have shared is that 70% plus of the population of the heart of the South Bay in the city of Longdale are Hispanic, so I think it's important that we celebrate that heritage. I do understand the anxiety or the fear of our current political climate. However, the way I teach my children is that you don't live in fear, you confront it, and you celebrate who you are, where you're from, and that is, you live in the present day, which, let's celebrate life today as we're here. I would ask why the low attendance could be possibly promotion. I understand in all the years that I've brought my children to the activities of the, in the community center, it has not been fully staffed, especially after COVID, the pandemic. The staffing was dropped, and I think recently it's just been starting to get, people are being brought on now, so now that you have people there to promote these events more, you might get more of a turnout. In regards to the political climate, you know, 4th of July still happened. I'm on the Little League Council, Little League Board Member. I went and volunteered in the fireworks booth. We didn't, we expected there to be a little less money earned, but we still earned money. People still celebrated 4th of July, people still came out, and, you know, I saw their faces, I saw the money that was being spent, so people are still gonna celebrate regardless of what's going on. I think people need to choose whether they want to come to an event like this. It shouldn't be determined for them, it shouldn't be pushed back out of fear. My concern would only be is that I live on Marines, so parking, I know is gonna be an issue, but I think a shuttle or something like that was being brought up as, to offer for them. I've attended all the Halloween events, the Christmas events, the spring extravaganzas. My kids are in the Mariachi Youth Band, they dance forklarico. I do Aztec dancing, these are all parts of my heritage. This is what I'm choosing to teach my children. That's why I kept them home during COVID and beyond now. My children are nine and seven years old, and I've been teaching them since. And that's one of the main things that I teach is personal responsibility and where they come from. So it's very important for me that this happens this year, and then we'll see next year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you everyone for your comments. Let's bring up the diaspora discussion. Let's hear from Bernadette Suarez.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody that came out today, and I actually really resonated with the last speaker in terms of not living in fear and putting on this event. I think you're right, some people will come, some may not, but I don't necessarily want, you know, I think that the council voted on doing this, and I guess part of my confusion is, I don't know how many meetings the subcommittee had. Was it three or?
Yeah, three.
Three. I don't understand why it took three meetings to say, when the council already said we're going forward with it this year, at least a majority of them. And so for me, I think, I think we do it. I don't necessarily think it's gonna be highly attended, because when you put on your events, they tend to be lower, and then they grow. That's kind of how you do it. I think that we can still have a nice event. I would be in favor of moving forward with it this year. We already voted on it, we budgeted for it. And I don't necessarily think it needs to be big, but I do think that you start somewhere. I think that you involve the local businesses, and you really get the community out. And so for me, I have no problem doing it this year. You know, if people don't want to attend, they don't have to, but I think we start it, and then every year we grow on that, and those are just my comments.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Kearney.
Okay, well, I'm on the other side of the fence. I think we should postpone this till next year. I understand your event, you give stuff away, people come out of the woodwork. You give back. I was at Assemblywoman Tina McKinner's backpack giveaway, and there were a thousand people there, but most of the Hispanics I talked to were looking over their shoulder because of ICE. We had, just recently, we had the governor doing his speech down in LA, and I showed up there. We had the young man that was down there in a truck selling strawberries, and they arrested him. We had the other father and, I mean, grandfather and son in the car, they shot at him. I don't want to be the councilman or this council to be up here and say, we put on a show and we got raided. I don't want to be known for that. I want to postpone it to next year. I think it gives us more time to communicate with you and the rest of us, but I don't feel comfortable putting on this year because of ICE and what's going on. And I know Anaheim's getting hammered, last weekend they got hammered again. They're moving down to Long Beach. It's just a matter of time to get over here. Hawthorne had it. I talked to two council members from different cities there, and they're putting on events, but they're starting to look over their shoulder, too. I don't want our residents to feel uncomfortable coming to an event and enjoying it when they have to look over their shoulders. So my recommendation to Councilman Telavera, is to postpone it till next year, when all this settles down, the dust is gone, and ICE has gone back to the nut in the White House in DC.
Okay, thank you. Telavera.
Yeah, thank you for coming out and supporting this event for the city. I just wanted to make a few comments. You know, comments of a lot of cities, it's some cities, it's not a lot of cities, it's some that have postponed. Inglewood is continuing with their Spanish, their Hispanic festival in September, and I just think it's, you know, we just have to live, we just have to do it to send a message to our community that we're not gonna live in fear, okay? And I think it's because it's, you know, historically, this is what, this is what happens. When they want to suppress a group, they take away our heritage, they take away our language, they take away like who we are. And I think this is just an opportunity for us to stand up and demonstrate something else. Now, we're afraid, we're all afraid and we're anxious because we're talking about, the focus is undocumented, but from the 61% of Hispanics in Longdale, not all of us are undocumented, okay? And next year, if you haven't heard in the news, the one big beautiful bill allows, allocates 75 or more billion dollars to ICE and to Homeland Security. And he's asking for 100,000 more agents. So you think it's gonna be better next year? It's not. So this is, so to use that premise is false. So I just think that we should follow along, go and march forward, you know, and it's a way for us that can to share and stand up for those that can't, okay? We have a saying in Spanish, and we say, "Ponte Trucha," and that means be alert. If you know that you're at high risk, well, unfortunately, this year, the event is not for you. But maybe next year, it will be. But we don't know that. Not if he's getting 75 billion dollars more to amp up his ICE raids and everything else. So it's, you know, we wish that everyone in our community could come out and be a part of this. And if we're talking about other events, the other events that we've had, the latest one that we had, which is National Night Out, then the one before that was the Music Festival, if you didn't go, then let me tell you, the majority of those in attendance, even though the attendance was low, were Hispanics. Because that's the makeup of our community, okay? So is ICE gonna come to the Halloween hunt? Is ICE gonna come to the Blues Festival? We don't know, they could, but I don't expect to see, I expect to see the same people come out for the Hispanic Festival that would come out for the Blues and the Halloween. Who is it gonna be? It's gonna be our Hispanic people that are gonna be there, mainly, okay? Not exclusively, but mainly, okay? Because we're trying to support the events that the city is putting on, okay? And I would say that we should continue, okay, and move forward, and in the discussion of our committee, I have made reference to that, that sometimes the events aren't well attended, not because of the political climate and not because of other reasons, other because that maybe it's poor promotion, you know? Putting it on our Instagram or on our YouTube page, that's not enough, okay? How many seniors, how many of the older adults, and not even senior citizens, but even older adults actually go on to YouTube? Not that many. There are a few of us that are more technologically savvy, but for the most part, we're not as a community. So my opinion is to move forward and to have a great event, you know, and partner up with those that want to move forward and celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so my take is just a little different. First of all, I want to delay it until next year, not because of ICE, although I do have concerns about ICE. I work in a big city, and I'll tell you, those events in the big city I work for, the attendance are low compared to last year, the attendance is not there. But I want to delay it because I want to give the committee a little more time. They've only met three, three meetings. That's not enough time for this magnitude of an event. That's not enough time for this magnitude of an event. I think they need to take more time, give the staff more time to polish it and put together so we can have a grandiose, fabioso, you know, event. And that's what I, how I stand on it. So I'll, I'll be voting to, to delay it until next year, but not because of ICE, primarily because I want to give the, the committee and the staff more time. So what, okay. Tel Aviv.
So then I would like to respond to that, Mayor, is that the committee, that, of, of us that are on the committee, Councilmember Kearney and myself, we're not at odds, okay, of having the event. We want the event, and we have, we have made plans, and we, we have incorporated things that the city has never done before. So it's not that we're not, we're not doing grandiose things. We are. We're doing, we're, we're doing, we're hitting all the avenues, okay? We're trying to partner up with, with, with people that can help. We talked about having sponsorships. We're having those in line. We have people, you know, there, I, I provided a list to Jason of, of possible people that can help us, you know, get a good head, a good headliner here to bring into people, you know, from, from our, from the communities, not only our community, but all the surrounding communities, okay? So the, the work has been done, and, and we've been, we, we're, we're not in agree, we're not in disagreement, and Councilmember Kearney can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not in disagreement of, of the, huh? Oh, Mayor Protem, sorry. Okay. All right, thank you. Neighbor. Sorry. So we're, we're not in disagreement of, of the, of the planning. That, that is moving along smoothly, you know? We have ideals, and we're, and we're, we're working on those ideals. The, the delay is whether we should do it because of ICE or not. So that's, that's the thing, but Mayor, I want to rest, rest assured that our plans, you know, we've talked with, we're, we're, we've had good conversations, and, and it's going to be great if it happens.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with it for 2025, the Hispanic Heritage Celebration.
And I second the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
Sorry? For item number nine, the motion fails with two votes yes, two votes no, and Councilmember Cuevas absent.
With that being said, I want to make a motion that we continue the work, but schedule it for next year.
That's your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Sorry, point of clarification, wouldn't that just come up in the budget next year?
It, it would, but it would be good to have a vote on actually delaying, because then we can talk about what the first vote means, what the second vote means in terms of what the council.
Can we wait until Councilmember Cuevas is here?
I would defer that to the two members of the ad hoc because they know what will need to happen between now and the, the council's next meeting. Certainly, it can wait till then from a legal perspective, but I defer to the, the two members of the ad hoc as to the practical implications of that.
Okay.
Ad hoc is still going to continue to meet? Because I don't have an issue with having it next year because we already voted to, to do it. I just, I guess, is this, is this just to show the public that we do intend to move forward with it next year? Is that what you're going towards? Oh, okay.
Okay.
Then, then I would like to add a friendly amendment to the mayor's motion, that then we have a moratorium on, on the future events because of ICE.
No, that's, that's out of order.
Why would that be out of order?
Friendly amendments don't really work. Friendly amendments, there's nothing friendly about amendments. They're either amendments or they're not. I do have, there's a motion on the floor. Did you second it?
I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor?
Can I say anything else?
No.
You can only speak, sorry, once on the public comment.
Is there any, any discussion on the motion itself? Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number nine, the second motion passes with three voting yes, one voting no, and Councilmember Cuevas absent.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, let's move on to item 10, service agreement with Lightbox for geographic information
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item before you is a service agreement with Lightbox for geographical information services. The city has been in contract with Lightbox and their company since 2003. Before the council is a one-year term for an extension and continuation of this agreement for a total of $19,610. So if this agreement is approved, it will be for one year, and we will bring up this item again for the council's consideration. Lightbox is used primarily by community development, but code MSD and Public Works also uses this database. It provides zoning information. The best example is if someone was to come to the counter and they said that they're the owner of our property, they try to get a building permit, we would use this geographical information system to verify who the owner is. They would have to show proof, driver's license, to show that the information matches the Lightbox. It's also used for geographical information such as zoning. It can tell us how many addresses is within a geographical area. It provides us with a lot of statistical analysis. So staff does recommend that the council review and approve this one, one-year agreement with Lightbox for one-year term. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, sir, to the council, this is on a form agreement, not the city's agreement, but for smaller contract cities, providers like this are unwilling to switch to our forms, so I did review theirs, and I do believe it's acceptable for the city to enter into.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Mr. Mayor and council, also, just a heads up, we are still doing the software review. The RFP is done. Staff's looking at it. That's why we're only asking for one year on this, because some of those RFP proposals include GIS services and zoning. That's why we have it here, because it's going to take us at least that long to select one, affirm, bring it forward, and bring it online. So I just want to add that up.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Any discussion on this item? No. What is the pleasure of this body concerning item 10?
I'll make a motion to accept stock repertation.
Motion's been made.
$19,610 and no change.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Frank Tel Aviv. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number 10, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas absent.
Item 11, approve the second amendment to the contract agreement with Public Works. Yes, sir.
Good evening again. This contract services agreement is for the remodels that are going on right now. We are proposing to extend it for three months. There's no additional cost involved. We just extended it for time. That is the recommendation. If you have any questions, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, are there any questions of this report?
Straight, straightforward.
Straightforward, yeah.
What is the pleasure of this body concerning?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Suarez.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 11, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cuevas absent.
Okay, we'll jump past 12, and we'll go to the city manager's report. Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, no items to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost there.
Okay, almost, almost there. Item 13, consideration of public relations consultant. Let's have staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'll be brief. So this item, you know, periodically, and this has come up over the last few years, about consideration of hiring a public relations consultant, and it's kind of in line with other items that the council's mentioned, you know, branding, getting our information out, even in special events, and periodically, we've been getting hit up by different firms, and so I was asked to put this item on for consideration and see if this is something that the council is interested in providing direction to staff, moving forward with a consideration of public relations consultants. This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, anyone wants to speak on this item? Bernadette Suarez.
Yes, I have questions, because this is the second time where I believe, according to the staff report, I think you got a proposal, and this is the second time, I think it happened with the, what was it, the lobbyist, where we get the proposals, and then we're like, oh, let's look into it, but I think we're the council, I think we set the directive. We say to consultants when we want services or not, and so I, I guess, I, I don't know, maybe because this is just the second time this has happened, but I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I, I would prefer, if anything, what I really think we need to do is look at a policy with regards to our, how we put stuff out. I mean, because I don't think other cities have policies about who is there in terms of public relations, who is the person that goes to the public and speaks. I know when we had that whole metro issue, the city manager kept doing interviews, and I think that it's important to keep in mind that we are the body, and so it should, communication should be very specific as to our messaging and what we're putting out to the public and whatnot. So, you know, I, I think before, you know, this one, I'm not in agreement with how it came about, and I didn't even get to see the, the proposal that was sent, but I think it's important for us to talk about, too, is, is our overall, how we're doing communication and outreach and protocols, because many of the other cities have those, and I think it's important for us to have a protocol, because ultimately, you know, we had the situation happen in the past where I think the mural and whatnot, and I think it's important for us to have protocols set in place. But yeah, those are just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else have anything they want to ask? Tel Aviv.
Yeah, I would just say, I think before hiring a PR firm, I think for myself, we need to be clear on our mission and our vision for our city. We have a beautiful, I think it's beautiful, and we're not capitalizing on it. We, I had attended one of the, one of the senators' inauguration swearing-in, and for the, for the cities that, that the person serves, you know, the video showed Gardena, it showed everything, the manufacturing, everything, Hawthorne, everything else, and when it came to our city, it was just the seal, no, nothing else. So, so we need to know, what are we going to be, what are we going to be known for? So, and so before we find someone to brand us and, and to do all the other stuff, we need to have a discussion, I believe, of what we want, what we see the city of Londo as.
Yeah. No, I definitely agree with that. The ideal was not to award this to any one public relations firm, it's just that it has come up a few times, but never have reached the agenda for a real resolution, and that was my thought when I put this on the agenda, and it was just reminded me, because this particular agency just inquired about what we were doing for public relations. It wasn't exactly a proposal, and that just reminded me, you know, that the light went off, that, okay, we need to finally get that on the, on the agenda so we can make some decisions.
Which firm was it?
I'm not really sure. Let me see.
Oh, it says T dot PR. Have you worked with them in the past?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so let's hear from the public real quick.
So I would just say that it is really important to get a PR firm, and what they, what a consultant can do is help you answer those questions. They, they don't just make it up for you. They'll work with you to say, okay, what is it that you are proud of in your city? What do you want to see your city be known for? All of those things. They can work out color schemes and logos and all kinds of things like that, and it's, it's really worth it, and I also think that it'll help us to get more people to our events,
No running, please. Take your time.
Just really quick, I'm with you on that. Why don't we have T-shirts or pins or anything with, when you say branding, that's the latest thing, is everybody's doing, my brand, your brand, or whatever. I think we should, we should have something more to, you know, say, purchase from city hall, something. When you go to different stores in different cities, and it's mainly the Walgreens, but they'll have T-shirts of whatever city that, that's in, and it's, it is actually nice to have, you know, where is like our pride and stuff for a city? And how about selling like T-shirts at these festivals and stuff, or have, but you know, like, when you do do an event, they have logos, you buy the T-shirt if you've entered the event or what have you with the, the date and the stuff. I think it'd be great. And the same with the, with the music festival. Can you imagine if you have, you know, the music festival, whatever year, and blah, blah, and have something nice on it? So I, I agree, we should, we should offer more, and like you say, branding, water bottle, whatever it is, but it makes a difference, and you know, and kind of make some money. I know you have to put some money out, but you can also make money, and you know, you gotta definitely have some pride, so that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kearney.
I have to agree with Councilman Tolliver. I think we have to get off our duffs and start thinking of things we want to do, and then we'll find the money to do it. I know we can't use discretionary funds for, I guess we could, I mean, as an attorney. Can we use discretionary fund to brand an item like water bottle, T-shirts, sweatshirts?
Under the, under the current logo policy, no, that would have to be a city action, not an individual action.
Okay. Well, I think we still should do it, find somewhere, you know, I can pitch in a dollar 98 or whatever it is you need, but I'm willing to do it on my own, for the city, for us, for the council.
You good? Bernadette Suarez.
I was just going to differentiate, because there's been discussion about branding, and then there's just been discussion about public relations. So there's a variety of things in here, and I don't think it's really specific. I think we need to know what we're asking for before we pursue this route. And then in terms of, I, I do agree that there's been issues with outreach, and I think when you look specifically at communications and PR, you need to get, just my suggestion, a firm that is familiar with the makeup of the community, because essentially, that's, they're, that's going to determine how you're doing your outreach. And, you know, it's been brought up, but this is a heavily Latino community, and so it would be helpful to have someone that specializes in that, you know, in outreach there, and other community members as well, but that's just a little bit of input, but
So for instance, on the city of Carson, they hired a consultant to put together their branding of their city. They're now dubbed as the Diamond of the South Bay. Right. And they have a logo to go with it. It's different from a seal. It's just a logo to go with it. But I'm, I'm okay with, with whatever we do tonight. I just want to put it on the agenda so we can get it resolved in terms of, are we going to hire someone to help us flush it out? Are we going to flush it out ourselves, then hire someone? Because either way, we got to put out. Because either way, we got to put out a, a proposal, a request, uh, for proposal for people to respond to. Yeah.
Can, can I ask too, because we don't have a full body here, I would be more comfortable having, um, Councilmember Quavis here. Because you really need to shape what you're asking in this RFP. A lot of these, you know, I, I guess I don't even know what we're looking for at this part. Are we looking for a new logo? Are we looking for more branding? You know, I guess that's my question. I don't, I don't even know what we're looking for at this point.
So Mayor, Council, we could bring this back with a full council. And then we can also generate some ideas, or we can also put together a workshop, which, you know, with the council and provide some information, feedback from the staff. And then look at, see which way we want to go, the council, the direction. And then you guys can provide us direction. That'd probably be a little bit more efficient than just trying to take a stab at it and provide more detailed information. And then maybe gather what, uh, other cities in the South Bay are doing. You reach out to the Cog and then see what cities are, what they put together and what firms they've used and what the programs they put together. For branding, public outreach, um, notification, media outreach, that's, that's come up. Council's brought that up. Um, I've had the feeling in that position, but maybe we need to have someone that put out public statements. Cause we do have things that happen constantly. So that, that's, we're looking, I think, what, what came to me several times, not just this time, but about, you know, not just branding, but also hiring someone to do public information as well. Someone that can do all around, um, all around it type of firm. So we can definitely bring this back, um, at a later date if that's the direction of the council.
I like that idea of, of a workshop. If it's part of the council meeting.
Me too.
You know.
And can, just a quick, I know this isn't like a big deal, but would that include our business cards too?
It certainly can include, it certainly could include, uh, maybe those ideas if that's up to the council.
You want everything to be kind of uniform.
Yeah.
So yeah, definitely.
I'm just curious what to see, but for me too, price tag is a big thing. Um, because I have concerns in other areas that we could be using some money. But, you know, I, I am curi- a workshop I wouldn't be opposed to.
Okay. All right. If that's the anonymous consent from the, um, the council, that'd be the, that'd be the order. Uh, Mayor? Consensus fine. Okay. All right, let's move to fourteen. Consideration of Bring Your Pet to Work Day Event. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, at the June twenty, the June twenty twenty-five, uh, City Council meeting, um, Councilmember Suarez, um, made a suggestion about having an event that would allow employees to bring their pets to work. So staff, um, did, um, a survey at various agencies to see, um, what other agencies are doing in this regard. Um, and with that, we did find that, um, there is some research out there that shows that, um, they're bringing their pet to work would improve the morale and create a more relaxed work environment. But there are some concerns and challenges in implementing such an event would have on operational, um, issues, um, health and safety concerns, um, liability risk, and fairness considerations, um, which I identified in the staff report. So at this time, staff is requesting information from council as to how you would like to proceed. If you'd like the staff to continue to look at the feasibility of putting together some type of event. And if so, what type of event would you be interested in?
Can we put this on hold?
Um, yeah, why not?
Thanks.
We're going to put this item on hold. You still want to speak? Okay, thank you.
While we're at it, can I also put, uh, eighteen on hold too? I'm skipping ahead, but just so we can go through these. I think there was some confusion with some comments that I made, so, um.
So you want to bring fourteen and eighteen on hold?
Yeah, table them.
You mean postpone, because when you table, it's, you take them up at the same me- on the same meeting. So let's, um,
Put it on hold.
So let's continue it.
Okay.
Both, um, both items. Eighteen. And which item?
Fourteen, the one we're doing right now, I think.
No, 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 we, we, we.
Yeah, fourteen and eighteen. We can go to fifteen.
Okay, fourteen and eighteen, okay.
Yeah, we can go to fifteen.
Now, why do you want to postpone, um, fourteen?
I think there was some confusion about the direction I was going and, um, I, I don't think I was very specific, so I'm going to try to work on be more specific with items that I bring forward.
Okay, okay, we can do that. Okay, item fifteen, discretionary fund budget amendment. There's a staff report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So on the June sixteen twenty-five council meeting during the budget adoption, um, I believe it was, uh, Councilmember Talavera brought up the idea of increasing the council member discretionary fund from twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred. So we're bringing that item back for council discussion and staff direction at this point.
Okay. Who would like, who would like to speak on this item? Okay, Councilman Talavera.
Okay, so yeah, it was, it was, uh, me that brought this up. And the reason was because, uh, to allow us to have, uh, more flexibility and also greater opportunities to reach out to our community and, and, uh, things that we wanted to do, uh, things that are already budgeted. We, uh, you know, uh, we get other invitations that are, are after the thought, after the budget is created. And it's really not enough to, to use everything, um, the, the discretionary fund is not large enough to do everything that we would want to do. Or, and it just depends on each council member. Some of us are big-hearted, some of us aren't. Some of us would like to do things and some of us don't. You know, uh, I noticed that on June thirtieth, uh, the, when the fiscal year closed, uh, some members, uh, uh, automatically gave like one, two, three, four, five scholarships. So during the year, they didn't, they didn't really do much really. So, um, and other ones, we'd like probably do it during, during the whole year through. So, and just recently, uh, I wanted to attend, uh, not as one of the delegates, because I think, uh, Mayor Protem is one of the delegates for the Lo- the League of Cal Cities.
Oh, the, yeah, I'm the alternate, yeah.
Okay, or the alternate, okay. So then, uh, when I asked, uh, the, uh, the administrative assistant if I could attend, she said, well, you could, but you'd have to use your discretionary fund now. So it's, it's like, um, and if I did, well, that, that would be almost, uh, half the chunk of it. So, and there's another, uh, I don't know if the, my other colleagues, uh, they received other invitations like from New Challenge Ministries and, uh, also the Independent Cities Association. There's fees with those, there's fees that, that, uh, that come to us after the budget has been done. So if we would, w- were able to increase our, our discretionary fund, then we would have more options to, to attend those functions. Um, that's my, that was my thinking. Uh, there's another event happening from California Cities for Local Control. Um, I was, uh, I was, um, led to this by a, a councilman in, um, in Cudahy. And it seemed very interesting, but it's, uh, you know, if I do it from my discretionary fund, then that would say, it takes the whole thing. So I just think that it's very limited, uh, just like in, uh, other things I, I think that we have to review. And, and, uh, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a big spender, okay? I'm just trying to get something that's, uh, that we're able to do more work. You know, uh, talking to, going to different functions, you know, sometimes there's a cost to that. And so that's, that's the reason why I, I, I asked for it to be increased. Plain and simple.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
Frank, we're on the opposite ends again.
Absolutely.
I'm so tired my shoes squeak. Two years ago, I wanted to cut this down to two thousand dollars. I think we have more than ample enough to pay for the stuff we want to do. I'm going to, uh, the CIA, uh, installation, and I'm paying it through my discretionary fund. I know you're, you're doing the council and you'll find out who you want to give money to. But twenty-five hundred dollars is plenty to that, to that. I don't think we should raise it any higher. That's why we're on opposite ends. Literally.
Yes.
Yeah, literally.
You want to get into work? Let's get some public comment in here.
I'd like to say, to thank the city clerk's office for always replying to my public records request on a timely basis. Uh, several years ago, council members discretionary funds were reduced from three thousand to twenty-five hundred due to budget constraints. Now increase of thirty-five hundred dollars is proposed, even though the average usage per member was eleven hundred eighty-one dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four, and fourteen hundred, eleven fifty-six in the twenty-four, twenty-five. Members are not even spending the full twenty-five hundred dollars currently available. Currently, there are no guidelines and little transparency. Expenses include donations to the Little League, the Southern Twenty-Five Club, other nonprofits, sympathy flowers, pins, and something labeled credit card charges. The city should adopt clear guidelines for discretionary spending as other cities have that ensure transparency, accountability, and public benefit. Apparently, staff is apparently working on such a policy which is in the right direction. Uh, there's no demonstrated need for an increase at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Matthew Harbison, resident Lawndale. Good evening, members, uh, the bottom at the top. I, I don't understand what everything is. I understand that it's discretionary, so it's your ability to do what you want with it. And maybe you can answer this or not, but my concern about discretionary funds is specifically if any of it can be used for the purpose of your own campaign for future elections or doing things that would move a political agenda so that talking to voters in the future would give you an unfair advantage because you're now getting three thousand five hundred dollars of taxpayer money to then influence an election. And now I don't know if that's the case. I have, all I know it's discretionary, you can do what you want with it. But I have concern of if you are able to do things with that money that will allow you not to improve as a politician or, uh, improve your networking, but rather you can do something that would allow your checkbox at the end of your, um, your resume to, to increase so that now someone else who's also trying to perhaps run for your spot doesn't have the bank account to fill those voids with and therefore is now starting at a disadvantage. And so what we're keeping are the people up top. And I have nothing against you, and it's, again, this is more ignorance on my part. I just, from speaking here and from speaking to a couple other people, we don't necessarily know what this is, and I appreciate Mr. Abrams and him bringing up the note that we are trying to get something going on what this is for transparency purposes. I just, again, my, my hope and my fear is that this is not used in ways that can benefit you politically for future elections for the purpose of people who are trying to maybe run against you. And this is extra money you're able to use. So I may be completely off and maybe it has nothing to do with it, but I figured I'd at least ask it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So I didn't think I would come up and speak on this, but, um, Matthew did make me realize the ethical implications of, of what is being done with this money. And it should be transparent. Um, I have a problem with giving gifts because after having, uh, done the four and a half hour ethics training, it was very arduous, I, I am concerned about that. And I, I, so I guess my question is, what kinds of things are done with this discretionary money? Um, I, I have full, I mean, if it's like, hey, I want to, uh, uh, be, become part of this organization, or, um, you know, so I'm paying my dues for the organization. Um, you know, or, oh, we have a little, uh, situation where we need fifty more dollars to pay the vendor. I'll take it out of, you know, my discretionary. I don't know what, what it's being used for. And I think that, you know, it's our taxpayer money, we should know. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kearney.
I can explain what I use it for. Last year, I gave a scholarship to a Lawndale student. She, she had to be a Lawndale resident, and I gave her a scholarship for that. I donated to Lucille Smith School for the Bicycle Roadial. I donated to a, uh, Ron, I don't remember which one it was. But everything I do, I go through the city, make sure it's legal. So I can say that.
Bernadette Suarez.
Yeah, I, I think it probably should have been attached to this agenda item, but there's this very specific policy on what it can be spent on. Um, and the council member's right. It has to do with, I think, the organization has to be in Lawndale. There's a few criteria, so, and, and the city writes a check too. We don't just get a checkbook and then write it out. So it goes through and usually if it's a new organization, the city attorney gets involved to make sure. So it is very, um, stringent on what you can use it on. And many other cities have these accounts as well, from what I understand, even at the LA County level. So yeah, just to add a bit of background on those. Does that, my question is to, um, staff is, everything that gets spent, right, a check, it would show up on the, on the, the meetings, right? Expenditure as an expenditure?
Yeah, I mean, everything spent is clearly identified and you'd see it on the.
Okay, and is it like a line item, like discretionary fund Talavero or Suarez?
Yeah, most likely it'd be on there as a line item and you'd be able to differentiate.
Okay, so it does get put into these packets, you know, if you look through, um, by line item. I mean, you would have to look through, or you could simply make a public records request and say, how did, um, Councilmember Suarez spend her money? Um, or her two thou- or what was it, two twenty-five hundred, how did she spend it? Which I rarely spend it. Um, but, um, so yeah, it, it is out for public information. My question was, um, and I'm trying to figure out how to, because I, I kind of had a suggestion and I don't know how that would go for the rest of the council. There's this talk about how we budget for conferences and those events. And then there's discretionary fund. And then the way that we allocate for members to go. I'm wondering if you just make it simple by just dividing the entire poll of wherever we go for conferences and the discretionary fund into five. And then you can choose which conferences you want to go to. And, and, and that way you don't change the dollar amount, it's the same. Um, and then two, I mean, it gets into the next one, but then, um, you know, if you wanted to join the membership, you would just have like a set amount for, you know, to join the membership that you wanted to. Um, ob- obviously it would have to pertain to city and, and, um, and it'd be a, a city, you know, benefit somehow. But I, I'm wondering if, you know, you go that, I don't know if that's.
I, you know, um, it was mentioned earlier, uh, our office is working with the executive assistant to look at things that have been done in the past. Um, when new items have come up, uh, my general rule has been, is it considered a gift of public funds under the California state law? And if not, is it benefiting the community, uh, and the community of Lawndale? Um, otherwise, if it's, as had, has been mentioned, a council member wishing to be involved in a regional activity, that, that's always fine. The only downside that I can see in the idea of putting conference funds and discretionary budgets together into a single fund is that the city is required to have a member at the League of California Cities each year. Um, and so if that member, i- i- there would actually be a downside then to being the chosen representative for the city, the voting delegate. Uh, instead of being a positive, it would be a downside because then that money would come out of your combined conference and, um, and discretionary budget. But certainly, um, that's a, something I want you all to think about, but it also is a policy choice for the five of you to make. And I won't make that choice. I just want you to think about that. As to the, um, the policy itself, that will be coming back hopefully in. As to the policy itself, that will be coming back hopefully in September, perhaps in October. We just want to make sure that we have hit everything that's been in there and that we get, we take the very limited policy that you do have in place now and try to eliminate those extra questions of, well, is this also allowed? Is that not allowed? It's fairly similar. So we will be bringing this back, and the questions that you're asking, I'm taking notes on so that those can all be included as part of your discussion for your policy. So please don't worry about that aspect. We're taking lots of notes tonight, and I'll turn it back to you as to the potential budget amendment.
Oh, and then, sorry, there was one comment about, so we cannot use the funds for campaign activities. But I think you got into a philosophical question where if you are an incumbent, you kind of already, you know, there's like, for example, certain, I mean, this gets into the political, but you kind of have the advantage already. So certain things that you do don't necessarily mean you're intending them to, but it's just, you know, you're going to meet more people, you're going to, so that's a whole nother philosophical. But no, you cannot use the money for campaign purposes and whatnot. And I think, you know, even if you wanted to have your own event, I think you would have to pay for it separately. You couldn't do it through the city fund, so if that helps answer your question.
Okay, so the question still remains, this item 15, discretionary fund budget amendment. Should we increase this, increase it from $2,500 to $3,500? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to leave it at $2,500.
Wait a second. I'll second it. Any discussion?
Wait, it's already the policy, so is, so would.
Well, you really don't need a motion.
You're just reaffirming the policy?
Yeah.
Just reaffirming where it stands today.
So the record will show.
So I'll withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion, right?
No, you don't need to withdraw your motion. You can if you want to, because you really don't need a motion, because automatically it will stay at.
So I'm going to withdraw my motion.
At $2,500.
And then, I guess to add for me, I don't necessarily ever use it, so for me, I wouldn't vote to increase it because I don't even use the $2,500. I don't, sometimes, some years I don't even use it at all, so.
Okay. So we will move our agenda to item 16. There was no resolution on that motion, by the way, Madam City Clerk. Let's take up item 16, consideration of the National Association of Latino Elected Officials Conference and Membership. That's to the staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this item was brought forward on the June 16 budget adoption meeting. Member, Councilmember Talavera had brought up the idea of one or more council members joining the National Association of Latino Elected Officials and also attending the annual conference. There was no action taken at that time, so we're bringing this item back up to council for discussion and staff traction. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Talavera.
Okay, well, I was the one that brought it up, so I'll start with it. Just like, I think, Councilmember Suarez had pointed out, there's other conferences other than the certain, the two or three main conferences that we already scheduled to go to. And even in those conferences, not all of us attend the full, all the full day's conferences. You know, sometimes we miss a day, or sometimes we can't because of other obligations. But I think anything that makes us more effective, I mean, you know, I want the city to invest. You know, yes, I'm the new guy, I'm the new kid on the block. I don't know everything, so I'd like to take an opportunity to learn. But it's not my, it's not, it's not fair for me to pay for all this and, and while I'm giving my service here to the city, you know, and it's, and it's, I think it's, this is an opportunity, just like any other of the conferences that we attend to, even though some people in the audience or in the city may think that they're just vacations for us, and they're not. Because I see my council, my colleagues, you know, along with me, sitting in these very tedious, sometimes, conferences, you know, and we're there, and we're learning, and we're trying to grab everything we can to make our city effective. And this, again, goes back to like the other point about branding and what I asked about having a meeting about what's our vision, what's our mission for the city. You know, it's like, well, you know, if the well is run dry, you know, and there's not much to pull out, you know, well, then we're not going to go that far. So I just think it's an opportunity. In teaching, we call it professional development. I think here we have professional development also, because we want every employee from the city, every teacher, if it's at the district, we want them to be the best that they can be. Okay, so, and if it comes through experience, well, you know, here we have Mayor Pro Tem, yeah, he has the most experience probably from all of us. But it's, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for us to sharpen our skills. It's an opportunity for us to network. I think, oh, you are? Oh, sorry, mayor. Okay, mayor.
There's no problem.
Okay. So, but I, but I think, you know, each of us know the value of networking also. You know, a lot of the conferences that we have gone to, I've sort of like been Mayor Pro Tem's sidekick or shadow, and he, I see how he works the, you know, works thing, and goes up and introduces himself, and, you know, and every time he does it, I'm learning, I'm thinking, you know, of what to do. So I'm taking all that in. So I'm just trying to provide us opportunities, you know. Again, now, if you feel that you've reached your high point and you don't need any more training, okay, great. But especially in a, an organization like Naleo and, you know, that focuses on the things that we're going through right now and the ice rays and all the political climate and things like that, you know, it's a good investment. You know, some of us are probably thinking, well, you know, this year and the just past, the conference was in Atlanta, Georgia, and next year it's here in LA. So, I mean, you can't judge, you can't say this conference, yes, or that conference, no, because their conference is over there, and let's just keep it local. I mean, it's, these people, these organizations, they choose usually one year, one extreme one point, and the next year, the opposite point. When I was, when I was the president of CSEA for the schools, one year was in Las Vegas, one year was in San Jose, and it just alternated year by year. So I just think it's another opportunity, and this year for my term, if you, just so you would know, I paid, I paid the membership from my discretionary fund.
Did you get the $200 or the $500?
I got the whole shebang.
Okay.
And I'm going to be here for four years.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion, on this, on this item, before we hear some public comment? Let's hear some public comment.
Thank you. Being involved in human resources for 25 years, I understand networking, professional development, but what I don't understand is why Lawndale is already a member of the California League of Cities, but they're not a member of their Latino Caucus, which is only $100, with their annual conference in Long Beach in October. No need to consider women board for now the state conference. The League of Cities Latino Caucus is a statewide membership association made of California elected officials as part of the largest statewide organization, the League of California Cities. The budget for the city council does not include membership of any other national organization other than the one mentioned tonight, as far as I could tell. This makes sense, as a council needs to focus on regional issues. California is the forefront of the issues impacting our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So I was looking at a couple of the organizations that just different people are involved in. I looked at the one that you brought up, Frank, and I was just curious, I don't know if necessarily which one is the best, maybe is that one the one you heard first? Did you look at, for example, Unidos U.S.? Did you look up Latino Victory Fund? I know that's a super PAC, but there's some other individuals who are moving good things through that organization, Voto Latino, as well as, there were like six or seven others as I was just looking through some stuff. I was wondering which one is best? And so is this a situation where a council member then does their research, says, I think that this would be the best for our city, and so we should go with this one? But then, does now that lock us into that organization if we find out it doesn't have Lawndale's best benefit in mind and there should have been another one? Are we making an annual commitment that if we go with this group, we will then, next year, go with the same group again, and we'll continue to pay this? But perhaps you wouldn't, we're assuming that you're wanting to be the representative for this, but perhaps next year, maybe you're the representative? Or are we looking to do a different group and allow one of the other members to be a representative? Is this something that we're looking as a legacy for the next 10 years? Because this is the best group for the Lawndale residents to have a voice with the Latino community, both here and in the national level? Or is there, are there other ones? And so I just, my question kind of really comes back down to, we are the public and we're trusting you, we voted you to make some good decisions on our behalf. And so in that regard, are you doing your research as far as which one is the best one to be a part of? How long does one need to be a part of it to really make positive action and change? And as the city, are we saying, okay, well, next year, we'll do this one, well, next year, we'll do this one? But so that just throws longevity out there. You're trying to network, but next year you have to go to that group, and next year we're this one. And so I'm just curious, are we looking at, I mean, having more money to then put in your discretionary fund to then pay for those things? Then you can pick the ones you want, and that'll help you network the places you want to go. But if we, if in the event in a few years, we only have five African Americans up there with no Latino heritage, maybe that's not endemic of the community and representative, but would one of them therefore have to go if there's not a Hispanic representative? And does the person who's up there wanting to be a part of this have to be of Hispanic origin to be able to be our city's representative? And so I'm just wondering if we're tying our hands, or if this is just a one thing, or every year we get to pick a new group?
Okay. Bernadette Suarez.
Okay. I think there were a lot, a lot of good points made in that speech, and I think, but I also understand where Councilmember Talavera is coming from. Naleo is a pretty big organization, and I think they even have, so the membership that the council member got was for him specifically, not, I don't, I don't know if they offer a city one, I think they might, but it was individually. But they do offer, I've seen some of the, I've gotten invited, I was a member at one point, I paid actually my personal funds to be a member, and they do put on a lot of good seminars, from what I can see. And some of these, I think you could make the argument that would be effective in terms of the networking and the people you meet, because some of them actually go to DC and I think talk to them. So I'm trying to figure out like an in-between where, because it was brought up to, ICA sometimes has conferences, and I've actually paid once with my own funds to go to, just to talk to some of the people there and attend some of the stuff out of my own personal funds. I'm wondering if there's room for flexibility in terms of, you know, we don't always use all of our conference funds, and I'm wondering if there's room to have maybe like a, you know, swap, you know, one out to be like, as long as it has to do with city business or something that the council member or mayor or Mayor Pro Tem thinks is of value, that there could be an allocation for them to say, hey, you know, I, you know, I'm allotted, you know, can I use it for this? Because we don't always use all of the funds. There's been times when, you know, I know there was the Contract Cities one for January, no one used those, and it was budgeted for two. I just, I, I wouldn't put it specifically for this organization, but to allow some flexibility, because, you know, there have been conferences where I've paid out of my own pocket to go to them. And I know there's the argument that we're vacationing, but I've had to request off my own vacation time for a lot of city stuff, so I'm using my personally earned hours towards some of these things, so.
Mayor, council, so.
No, go ahead.
Mayor, sorry. So it's totally up to you how you want to proceed, bringing it forward on this item. Just a reminder that we, the council, pick on the budget time what special conferences you want to go to, that's notwithstanding Councilmember Suarez's comments, but I just want to bring that up to you, that it is decided at the budget time, but that's certainly up to the council to decide and provide direction to staff.
And I would just, just add that we're getting a little bit afield of the item in front of us, and I understand what Councilmember Suarez is saying, but we're, we're not quite at, because we're still talking hypothetically, but I don't want us to get into starting to say that, yes, we should, or no, we shouldn't, make a change to the overall way that you as a council deal with conferences, because that would have to be brought back as an actual noticed budget item for purposes of public input. So I just want to get there, but as long as we're continuing to speak hypothetically, I'm fine with where we are right now.
Can I then ask to continue? Because we don't have Councilmember Cuevas here, and this concerns her as well. Can we continue this? And then if you don't have any objections, to look at it from a perspective of maybe more of, you know, as long as it fits these guidelines, allowing us some flexibility with going to a conference that's outside of the current membership?
Well, I'm flexible with everything. I just, the purpose of me bringing this was to give us an opportunity, you know, to, to have professional development, increase our access to, and building connections. The more we're connected, the better we network, the better we can function for our city. Now, if the city doesn't find value in any of that, well, you know, you got what you got. Okay? So, so this is what it is. So I just think that the more opportunities that we have, and I, I've been, I've been a member of Naleo, and it's, it's an individual thing. It's not, it's not like Contract Cities, where it's, the membership is the city, not us. Okay? We are representing for the city, we go, but the contract is not, is not for each individual council member. It's with the city. Naleo is different. It is for the individual, that you can go, you can learn, and you can bring this up back to your city, to your, to your organization. I was a part of Naleo when I was a school board member for Sentinel Valley. So I learned a lot, I used it a lot, and I just thought it was a great opportunity. I'm familiar with this organization. I think they offer great professional development, great workshops, you know, the things that also that we need, like the ethics training and all that, is provided through Contract Cities, that we go, we attend, and we're certified. You know, this, this isn't that one. And I mentioned another one, it's called, it's called Local Control of Cities. So, but I don't know if, if, if the comments are generated because of where the conferences are taking place, or because of the cost, or, but it's, it's, to me, it's something valuable, you know? Like I said, I'm new, I want to learn as much as I can, not, I can't learn everything from, from the people that are up here. I have to find other avenues to learn what I can and bring those things to the city, bring those things, you know, here. You know, some of my ideals, I know are going to be shot down. I'm okay with that, you know, and I didn't come here to get my way and have everyone do what I say. I'm not, that's not me. I'm, but I do, but I do want to be prepared and learn as much as I can. I'm just, but I do, but I do want to be prepared and learn as much as I can. When I decided to become a council member, I decided that I was going to do the best that I could and learn the, as much as I can to be the best council member that I could for, for the city of Landale. Not better than anybody else, but the best for me and the best for you. Okay? So I know, like I said, I'm here for four years. Beyond four years, I don't know, I don't have any other aspirations, you know? Unless, unless, you know, I, in the fourth year, I decide, yeah, you know what? I sort of like it, you know? I think I'm going to stick around a little bit longer, you know? Once you get the bug, you get the bug. But right now, I'm just, I'm just concentrating on the four years and doing what I can for, for the city of Landale, for its residents. And I want to be the best that I can be, you know? And, and I think that organizations such as this and, and whatever, whatever other ones that might, they may exist. Yeah. How many are there? There are a lot. Okay? What do they all do? I don't know. You know, everything. And everything does a little bit of, of the same thing. There's a lot of overlap, we could say, you know? And, and that's, that was the purpose of me asking. And if, if, if the, if the majority doesn't find benefit in this, okay. That's cool with me.
Well, let me add this. Let me clarify something. One of the speakers asked, do you have to be Hispanic or Latino to join? The answer is no. As long as you represent a Latino quote unquote city, you can become a member, probably even if you don't.
Yeah.
You know, because it's a, it's a 501(c)(3). So I became familiar with this association, National Association of Latino Elected Officials, when I worked for the late Senator Gina Oropessa. I was her deputy for seven years. And she was a member, of course. So I used to staff her for all the events for Leo. And I know they do some good, some good conferences and good workshops and stuff like that. And you get a, a lot of enrichment out of it. I'm not so sure though if we should put it as a budget item though. Because you can use your discretionary funds as, as you said you did before, you have before. And I know that most of discretionary funds are, not most of them. Sometime, sometimes there's leftover funds.
Right.
And instead of putting those back in the pot, you could ask, you or anyone else can ask another council member, hey, can I use some of your funds, right, to go to this conference or what have you? And that has happened before. You know, it's been conferences that, I don't remember which conference it was, but I know it was some conference that I wanted to go to, but I didn't have enough money in my account. I think it was you that gave me, you know, a couple hundred bucks.
I didn't make sure it was okay.
Right? And it's totally legal, right? It's totally appropriate. So that's, that's one way of doing it. I'm not saying I'm totally opposed to putting it in the budget, but I just have some reserves of putting it in the budget rather than using discretionary funds for it. But they do great work, absolutely. That's all I want to add. So what, so with that being the case, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this request?
I'll reiterate that I don't want it to single out to one. I feel like if we do something like this, you know, we each may have an organization that we feel is worthy. So I think it would be appropriate to make it more of a general, like, you know, allowance. But then I guess that goes back to the discretionary fund allowance.
Yeah.
And then the other question, well, we already went past it, but I didn't ask at the time. So do we have to re-agendize it? Because I wanted to know with discretionary fund, maybe one year you're more active than another year. Like last year I couldn't do anything because I was in the hospital half the time. But that, this year I'm kind of like blowing forward with a bunch of stuff. So can you roll over your discretionary fund?
Mayor, council, we do not roll over the discretionary fund. Finance, want to speak on that?
Yeah, as a general practice, we don't roll over any funds from one year to the next.
Is it city or?
Citywide.
Is it, is it specific to Landale or do other cities?
Yes. It just depends on the cities, but for the city of Landale, we're not rolling over funds from one year to the next. Not just for discretionary, for all funds.
Oh.
All budget items. It's not just discretionary, it's all budget. Nothing gets rolled over.
Okay.
Okay. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this request on item 16?
Okay. I'm going to ask a question now.
Okay.
Because we're already past the budget cycle. Would you be okay with putting it for the budget subcommittee for the next year? That way we can talk about, you know, putting it with the rest.
Yeah, because the, the conference already passed. But, but also, you know, and, and we're talking about discretionary fund. There's one, there's not even enough in our discretionary fund for, to attend the conference. So.
So perhaps we put this for the next budget cycle.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mm-hmm. So is that your motion?
Okay.
Let's just.
I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay. Let's move on to item 17, customer service survey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This item is a customer satisfaction survey. On March 3rd, 2025, the City Council was presented an overview of the Community Development Department. And at this council meeting, staff was requested to, you know, reach out to three firms that would essentially provide a software where the software could rate community developments, survey, level of service, satisfactions, areas of concerns. So staff reached out to three firms. They provided us with three tentative quotes that's attached to a staff report. The, the three firms is one, Sogo Core. Their proposal is $9,000 a year. Sogo Core, although they do have the software to do everything, they, they kind of specialize in enterprise, private enterprises. So their customers kind of like IBM, Hilton Hotels, Sony, Apple. And the second firm is Alkemar. They have two types of proposals. One, which is business, it's $10,000 a year. And a second one is a small teams where you wouldn't enter a contract. You would just pay a monthly subscription. And the monthly subscription can range depending on the service. It would be a max of about $2,000 per year, if that's the direction. The third firm is called Trix XM. Their price is $16,250 a year. They're more responsive, so if someone had graffiti, they would, the residents can basically notify and provide a survey and let staff know basically at that time, in real, real time. So all three does have the capabilities of managing a survey. The survey would be, the questions would, or community development will work with IT. Because there is a limited three users, IT would run this survey to rate community development. Staff is available to answer any questions. And the city's purchasing policy for, it's a $4,000 to $5,000. We require three quotes. For $5,000 to $15,000, we need three bids and city manager authorization. So with, based on the price, staff recommends Alkemar. Staff is available to answer any questions or receive input whether the council prefers a business platform or a small teams platform. There's no budget for this item currently. If, if, if Alkemar is selected, we would move forward with a budget amendment. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions of the report? Okay, let's hear from Suarez.
Um, just a point of clarification. These surveys, who analyzes the responses? Is it the company? Or does staff have control of the responses? Or like, who's like ultimately like takes?
It would be the user. So they have the software. All three of them uses their own software. It's in staff's opinion that the one that's more relatable to government services is Alkemar. If you go to their website, it shows that it does a lot of surveys for government agencies. But it would be the survey user. So we would, staff would use it. And then once it goes active, IT would manage the survey. They would see the data and once, so this software provides charts, analysis, just everything that the input that we receive. They're able to translate it to, easy to read chart and data for the council's information.
And it's anonymous?
I believe it can be submitted as you don't have, you don't have to submit their, you know, your name, address. You can just put a satisfaction survey, but it could be, yes. And the user, there's three users. If we go with Alkemar and we wouldn't know who made the comments, but we just know these were the comments, these were the concerns, these are the areas of improvements. This is where we were satisfied, you know? However, the survey is structured because it's, all three of them is a, you create your own flexibility on what the survey and what data you want to obtain.
And then this is, the contract you're looking for is for a year?
Just for comparison purposes, they gave quotes for a year. But the second firm, Alkemar, does have a monthly subscription.
Okay. Because I think, so I'm the one that requested this. And I think originally my thought process behind it was to figure out what people struggle with when they're coming to community development. You know, you get several complaints about and whatnot and kind of figure out what issues they had and kind of looking at those issues that they may have had and then analyzing, okay, how can we improve things? You know? And, and just kind of, I have a feeling that it's, I guess, trying to look at the data behind it. And that's what my intent was. So I, I do think this is very important for us to look for. Because I've heard from business owners, I heard from residents, developers. So I do think this is something that I, I would really like to see us pursue.
Mr. Petker.
I have a concern. So let's say that Bernadette's working for the, I come and get a permit or permitted or whatever. And she gives me, no, she didn't give me attitude, but the price she quotes me pisses me off. So I do this survey and give her a bad report. And I said, next question is the same thing. Would that have any reflection on a lawsuit against the city by that employee? Or how would that work? Because in all facets of work, you could be the greatest guy. And if you don't appease this person, they're going to give you a bad report, bad survey.
I think that would be a question for the attorney, but.
Or HR.
It, so, I mean, that, that's for the attorney, but.
Let HR take a stab at it. And then the attorney can chime in if he, if he would like.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It sounds like Mayor Pro Tem was questioning whether or not the survey would result, reflect in employees' performance, right?
Yes, and then.
And so I don't think that that's what we're looking to do here. But if it was tied into the employees' performance, then it could be a problem.
Okay. Does the employee have the opportunity to see this? Or is it, he, he or she's blinded by it, they don't get to see their surveys?
So this would be a multi-month approach in gathering data. Community development would not see it until at the end.
Okay. Because I am worried that, you know, somebody come in and debate a pricing and they go home and do the survey and give this individual a bad report on it based on because she, he or she didn't get what, what she wanted, he or she wanted. And I just feel maybe down the road, this could be used against us as a lawsuit.
If, if I can just add, I think that we would need to be clear as to what the purpose of this survey is. If it's just to improve overall customer service, that's different from actually tying it into an employee's performance. Because if, if a complaint comes in against an employee and then the manager or supervisor decides that they want to include that in the performance evaluation, then that could be, pose a problem with us, with the union and the individual employee. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go to Telavira.
Okay. So that was my question was, is what is the purpose of the survey? Customer satisfaction, whether the department did a good job or they do a bad job? Because from the things that I've been hearing from residents and sometimes when I walk into the, over there by the counter, they're, I think they're more feeling of a frustration that the process isn't going as fast as they, as that they would like it to go. And one even said, you know, in, in the other city over there, we have, they have expedited service. You pay an extra fee, you pay a higher fee, you get a, you get bumped up on the, on the queue, I guess, to, to get a, an inspection or something. So I, I think if, if, if the purpose of this survey is to say, yes, this department did a good job or not, you know, then I would not agree with it. But if it's, I would rather see us hire a firm that specializes in efficiency or auto, auto, office automation or department, you know, say, hey, this is what you guys are doing right now, but here's a better way to do it. And here, and, and if we're offering our clients, our customers, a better way to do it, well, they're going to be happy. You know, not everyone's happy 100% of the time, but at least the majority of the time. Because then, because this firm is going to say, okay, uh, community department, community department, this is what we think should happen. This, you know, but if we're doing a customer survey and, and we're just finding out who's, who's satisfied, who's not, and there's no, there's no change in the process, then we've, I don't think we've gained much. Yeah, we, 30% are dissatisfied, you know? Okay, well, that's good to know. But, but if we, if the system continues the same, well, we're always going to get those 30% that are dissatisfied because we're doing the same thing, you know, in, in the same way. But if, if we had a, a company to come in and say, okay, let me see your process. Okay, well, here, look, let me offer you this suggestion. Let's do it this way. I think that would be more beneficial than, than to see if the customer's satisfied or not.
Yeah. My short response to that is I would agree. Let's hear from Bernadette Suarez.
Okay. So I think there's some confusion that this is just like, oh, did you have a good experience? My thought behind this was, you know, asking specific questions. Was your permit process in a timely manner? Were the codes clear for you? What permits did you pull? I want to know which, I, okay, I'll give an example. I had a, once a resident reach out to me. I think they started changing out their bathtub or something. And then they went to community development and it took them four days. They were, I think they got like a stop work order or something like that. And then they had to wait several days and over the weekend. And they said, we only have one bathroom. I have a family, you know? And I, I know I started it, but now I really need the permit because you're telling me I can't have it without it. So I don't know how many days that resident went without getting a permit. This is an anomaly. I'm not saying it happens all the time. But I want to capture those types of experiences that residents have and know, okay, what, how long does it take to pull one of those permits? Okay. What, what permits are being pulled a lot? And maybe it isn't, maybe you're right. Maybe it isn't captured in a customer survey response. I just thought that that would help see, gauge people's interaction. Because I get, I get a lot of people, and I know people tend to come, only give you feedback when it's something they want to complain about. But I get enough of it to know that there are certain things that we do need to look at in, in not just that one department, but probably other departments. And how we're managing things, are we updated? You know, are we using, for example, people right now, they can't even pay online. And I think that's a pretty big deal considering the majority of our, not majority, but the median age range in this city, I think it was like 35 to 50. And I'm like, and those people definitely use online. So that was my thought process behind it is, and maybe you're right. Maybe it's not customer satisfaction survey. But my thought behind it was, what are the? customer satisfaction survey, but my thought behind it was, what are the struggle points for residents when they're trying to pull permits? When they're trying to deal with the city, whether it's, you know, whatever it is? And I was trying to figure out a way to capture those responses for people who have actually dealt with the city and how can we make it a better process? So that, that is my intent behind it, is not just, yes, I had a good day, or no, I didn't like this employee's response, but maybe the fees are something that we need to look at. If, if everybody's saying, you know what, your fees are just too expensive for this, then maybe it is something, if it's something that people pull often, you know, maybe it needs to be reevaluated. And that was my thought process behind bringing it forward. But I'm not unopposed to having maybe an audit firm, if one such firm exists, to see how we're processing things. I have no opposition. Any way that I can find a way to look at how we're doing things and give residents, get input from residents, because that's the other component of it, too. We can hire an audit firm, but like we talked about with the traffic committee or the traffic item earlier today, these are the people that are living it and actually going through the process. And so that's the component that I also wanted to capture is the public's responses and how they're dealing with it. Because sometimes they won't come to us, they'll say it to someone else, and I want to get the live feedback directly from them. That way, we can use it, evaluate it, and make it more efficient for everybody.
Okay, thank you for that. So in, in short, you're looking for efficiency of consulting. Is that what you, that's kind of like what you were speaking to?
That's what I was speaking to.
Yeah, and I think you may agree.
I agree to an extent that I do think the public needs to give input, because they're the ones that are doing it in prac, in, in, in practice.
Okay.
So there's the analytical approach, and then there's, there's, how is it working in actuality? If, and I just bring up that resident who, yes, we offer over-the-counter permits, but what happens when the weekend goes by? And yes, maybe he started, he didn't know that you need, you know, a permit to fix a light bulb or change a light bulb or whatever, a light fixture out of your home. What happens when he has one bathroom and he has to go the whole weekend with a family of three kids and he can't get that permit? That's my concern, is situations like that. What can we do to better the process for residents?
Okay, I'm with you. Did you want to speak? Yes, sir. No, go, go ahead. No, the, the guy in the orange first.
Good evening, everybody. Juan Granados, you guys are going to think that this is silly. Even a few of my neighbors thought that it was pretty silly, but it made sense in a way of actually having something here for the city of Lawndale only, one of those podcasts, exactly for that. There's a lot of people that would like to vent, lots of people that like to vent about how the community's doing, those services that are here now. They also complain about a lot of those, about the city isn't doing this, the city isn't doing that, the people here are rude, the people there are there. I've never had a problem, but a lot of people do. And if it sounds silly, I think it would work because it's therapy. They're going to actually talk to somebody. So that's just an idea, it's just a brainstorm, and it's something that's futuristic, if you want to call it that, because I'm, I'm old now. I'm not savvy with the YouTube and all that, I'm not really interested in any of that. But again, it's just something to throw out there and to keep that in mind, maybe. Thank you, guys. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor?
I, I think after your clarification, I kind of was a little more comfortable with it. A customer satisfaction survey, though, that means that if you're doing something like you're saying, are you satisfied by working with like the parking people? Probably not going to be, right? There's just some, some parts of running a city that people are just not going to be happy with. And as far as like complaining about a fine, well, any fine is going to be, I'm, I'm not going to like that. But it's for the good of the city that, hey, you know, you shouldn't be parking so that you're taking up three spaces or something like that. So a, a lot of, I think, what people are complaining about is they don't understand why the rule is there, why the, the fee is there, and maybe they don't even know what other cities do. So for them, this is just unreasonable, but it probably isn't. It takes a long time to do some things, I mean, bureaucracy is slow. And so I, I do agree with Frank that, that there should be something that's just like a, I don't know what it would be called, an efficiency survey or, I don't know what the terminology would be, but definitely not a customer satisfaction survey. That, that, that can run into some trouble.
Okay, thank you for those who spoke. Let's bring it up to Diaz for direction. How would you like to proceed?
I want to get the public's input on this. I hear so many responses on it's difficult to get work done, that I'm just going to go and not even do it and risk getting caught. I want to know what the kinks are that need to be worked out, because I hear it time and time again, and I just, I think we need to do a better job. I feel firmly on that. And I've, I know I've received criticism on it from all over the place because I keep harping on it, but it's something that I really believe in. I believe we need to make this process easier for the residents, and I don't know how to do that, and that's why I'm pursuing this way. I think this doesn't deal with fines and whatnot. It deals specifically with a department that, let me sidetrack for, go, go on a little bit of a side note. This department, the fees that you pay for the permit specifically pay for employee salaries. So you basically get charged the fee. This is the only department that it doesn't get written into the general fund. You specifically, the fee you're paying is actually, you're paying for the labor that's behind it and associated with it. And so, to that note, I think that it is important that, and I'm not saying it's all on the employees, because I know we contract with the county and whatnot, and I know you guys do work hard, but it's, I, it's not even so much as the employees, is I, I seriously think that there's issues with some of our processes, with some of our codes, and I think some of them are outdated, and I think we need to bring them to, you know, bring them forward, and I think some of them are overregulated. I think we need to, especially when it comes to residents, commercial's a whole nother one, but I think when it comes to residents, we need to work with them. You'd be surprised how many permits. The only one that you don't need a permit for are flooring and paint. But other than that, I mean, you need one to change out a light fixture, you need one to change out your faucet, you need one to, you know, if it's the drywall's a certain, you know, a certain size, you need to get a permit for that. And it's like, you know, do we necessarily need to do a permit for everything? I mean, I don't know, that's, sorry, I'm, I'm on my soapbox right now, but...
Let me ask you this. So how would you think about, or what would you think about having a manual as to, do I need a permit to do dot, dot, dot? And then you list the things that you need a permit for, and you list the things that you don't need a permit for? Is that something you, you're looking for?
I think that the other issue is that people don't understand the, how the city works. We have a lot of people that, English isn't even their first language, now let alone, you know, trying to figure out...
You can put it in another language, it doesn't have to necessarily just be in English.
But I'm saying, that was, that was just the point of, you compound it with now trying to figure out city codes and whatnot. And sometimes I go through them and try to read them, and, you know, it's, it's confusing to me, and that's not my area of expertise. I'm just trying to say that I think, what I'm trying to accomplish is, we need public input. And not just for me, I think that it needs to be on record from people that complain about trying to work through the system, something is off with the system. And I think we need to figure out what is off with it so that we can refine it. And I know there's the argument that, yes, these were put in place for a reason and whatnot. Things change over the years. You know, different materials come up, different things, things that weren't an issue back then, you know, it, it's different. And I think we need to hear from our residents on what they're having trouble with and figure out how to fix it. I don't know whether that's done through a survey or what, but I definitely think we, I, this, I only went this route because I don't know what else to do to figure out how to fix things.
So why don't we ask the, the city manager to take this into consideration and just come up with some ideals of how he can satisfy what you're looking for without doing the customer satisfaction survey, that, but will get the job done and get you your information that you need and that we need? Is that okay?
Sure.
Mr. City Manager?
Whatever the direction of the mayor and council is. Whatever the direction the mayor and council is.
How do you, how do you think, how much time you think you might need to put together something like that?
We, we need at least a couple of months to come up with some efficiency and some, provide some feedback and some information back.
Okay.
Can you also look into firms at the suggestion that audit your processes and see if there is one that looks at government? Because I, there's a few departments that I would like to do that for.
Not a problem, Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, let's, okay, we're going to skip 18. Okay, we, council reports at, in attendance at meetings. Councilman Tel Aviv.
Okay. On the, on the 5th, I attended National Night Out, my first one, I think, in many, many years. It was, to me, it was wonderful. I enjoyed it very much. I was able to convince my wife to come out and, and have dinner with me and, at the event, and got to meet a, a lot of interesting people and, and some of the vendors that were there, some people that were tabling, they are really excited to, to collaborate and partnership with, with the city. You know, they've asked and I, and they said, no, we've, we've offered and, you know, we haven't heard anything. So I, I just want to encourage us as a city to reach out to, to all these different businesses in our city. They're willing, they want to, and, and so it was, it was an exciting event and to see also the, the kids there, excited to see the, the firemen and the police and the truck and the, and the motorcycle. So it was great. One of my favorite things to do is have lunch with the seniors. So I'm a, a regular visitor, so it's, it's, I, I really enjoy it. I have my own table now, you know? Sometimes they, they save me a seat and so I, I'm really enjoying it. And, and I've met, like I said, a, a person from my dad's hometown and we're talking and, and so it's, it's been a very wonderful experience for me. Again, I attended the South Bay Justice Alliance at the Row. Annette, thank you for all the information. It was, it was just enlightening, it was, it was, it was wonderful. It, it gave me a new perspective and, and, and I actually was able to learn to appreciate the fight. Thank you, you know, and sometimes people just think, well, you know, it's not going to happen to me or, and it, it is, it's going to affect us. So I, I just want to thank the South Bay Justice Alliance for, for that opportunity. And Pat and I met for the Hispanic Heritage Month Festival, and like I said, we're not in disagreement on, on the performers, we're not in disagreement of, of the activities that's happening, you know? Fortunately, it's, it's, you know, we're, it's not going to happen this year, but it gives us time to, to continue to, to work, and I'm looking forward to continue working and with, with the ad hoc committee and, and even make a bigger, better festival for, for this event. And on the 13th and 15th, again, I attended the senior lunch, and I'll be there tomorrow, too. All right, so thank, that's all I have.
Okay. Councilwoman Suarez?
I had a, for the South Bay Cities Council of Government Steering Committee, we set the agenda. I also attended, which is going to come, I had a, sorry, let me backtrack. League of California Cities LA Division had their installation for the LA Division President, Britt Huff, from Rolling Hills Estates. So I attended that. During that meeting, I was approached by an individual, I forget the name of the company he worked for, but it, he asked questions about the program pace. So I did ask for that to be, have a presentation, because we currently are not a member of the program, and, and a resident, from what I understand, tried to do some home improvements and couldn't, so that, we'll just, just get a, a presentation on it. And then I, I attended council meeting for the city of Rolling Hills as the new COG Chair, trying to get cities' information on what their dues are paying towards. So I think at, maybe the next meeting or so, I'll present Lawndale stats. And then I also did the same thing for city of Gardena. And then last, was it Thursday, the South Bay Cities Council of Government had their legislative update, which I chaired the meeting for. And then I think that's it. Pass it along.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Okay, I also attended the National Night Out. It was really put together, Jason and, and Mike did a fantastic job. Frank was there, he bought his wife dinner from the vendor there, big spender. And then I think Frank enjoys the lunches over there, senior. I think he's one of the youngest members there. Also, I attended the ad hoc, as Councilman Tel Aviv said. I attended Library Trust and Oversight Commission, and I did back-to-school backpack giveaway and health fair for a South Bay woman, Tina McKinner, over in, I've been sitting on Crenshaw and Imperial. It was well-attended, I, there was a lot of people there. She gave away almost like a swag bag. Next to her was the backpacks, but it was great. They had free food, they were Robert Juvin heaven, they gave away burritos, all kinds of stuff. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Real quickly, I attended the National Night Out as well. Congresswoman Maxine Water graced us with her appearance.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I also attended the, the South Bay Council of Government's Legislative Briefing. I attended Inglewood Councilmember Alex Padilla's annual picnic in Chili Cookoff. Yep. And I attended the, the League of California Cities Installation, and I was also approached by that same person, more than likely, about pace program. And that's all I have. With that, we do have a number of closed sessions. One, two, three.
Three.
We've got three closed sessions, right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The council will meet to confer with the labor negotiator, the city manager regarding negotiations with unrepresented employees under Government Code 54957.6, and will meet with me on two items of existing litigation under Government Code 54956.91. That is Lawndale versus LA Investment and Lawndale versus Kimball. Thank you. Thank you.
...